Well, as most of you know, we have somewhat of a traffic jam on 95. We have four commissioners here. Christina Znardi is still out there stuck in traffic, so we all have a collective feeling of something for her, but she'll get here safely, hopefully. So I want to welcome everyone to the county commission meeting on this September 19th, 2017. It happens to be the 262nd day of the year, if anyone cares. This is a time in the meeting where we take a lighthearted look at what's going on in the world, some useless trivia and some useless history perhaps, and hopefully some of you will find it interesting. So let's start with a little-known and relatively unimportant event that occurred on this day in 1960. On this day in 1960, Chubby Checker's Twist became number one on Billboard's number 100. That in itself isn't a real big deal because it was only there for one week. However, what is notable is that it is the only record in history to be on the Billboard top 100 twice in two different years. And so that was, that occurred on January 13th, 1962. So now you can tell everybody that you know something that probably nobody else cares about or knows about. And being that we're involved with hurricanes being September, I thought you might have some interest in some trivia for hurricanes as well. This week in 1999, 18 years ago, Floyd was menacing Florida. Floyd, if you recall, if you were here then, had 155 mile an hour winds, and it was aimed at Brevard County for about three days. And the forecasters kept saying it was going to turn, much like last week with Irma. And it kept not turning, kept not turning, and Jeb Bush finally ordered a mandatory evacuation for the entire east coast of Florida. And 95 and the Turnpike were a parking lot, and he made them, he signed an executive order making them northbound in all directions. And so it was just, there was no southbound on either of those roads. It was all northbound. And it was a parking lot, and it was crazy, and everybody was scared to death because we were staring down the barrel of 155 mile an hour winds, and they were just coming right at Brevard County. Well, finally, with about 12 hours to go, it did turn north, so we dodged that bullet. So that was 18 years ago, and way back in 1947, another hurricane, which had no name because they didn't have names in those days, slammed into Louisiana with 112 mile an hour winds. So that's your historical hurricane trivia for the day. So that out of the way, let's start the serious business of the day. I call this meeting to order, and we don't have an invocation, so would you please stand just for a moment of silence, please? Thank you. Plagiarian Legion?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll accept the motion to approve the minutes from July 11th, August 8th, regular meeting, August 3rd, 2017 zoning meeting minutes, and the August 15th, 2017 special meeting minutes.
So move.
I have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Anyone wish to vote no? Passes 4-0. Okay, before we get into resolutions, Kimberly Prosser, I see that you're here. Could you come forward, please, and give us an update? Kimberly Prosser is our emergency management director and did a, I can't even come up with a good adjective, a stellar job last week. She just was phenomenal. She made order out of mayhem, so I'll let her fill you in with some more information.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, as you know, we experienced the brunt of Hurricane Irma last week, in addition to what were mostly tropical storm force winds with some hurricane force gusts. We also experienced about 15 inches of rain in 12 hours, as well as seven confirmed tornadoes. So there was quite a bit of damage throughout the county. There were, at last count, 7,132 homes damaged, ranging from minor damage to destroyed. We sheltered over 3,600 people in our shelters, including over 450 pets. Over 307,000 people lost their power, and as of 8 o'clock this morning, there are only 130 people without power. So that's, that's a big improvement. There were 219 traffic signals impacted, 140,000 sandbags distributed, and more than 12,211 calls received. The estimate of debris that needs to be collected is approximately 600,000 cubic yards, and there is an estimate of $25 million in damage to county facilities. Now, as far as FEMA reimbursement, this is declared as a major disaster, so the costs that were expended on emergency protective measures and debris are confirmed that they will reimburse. Emergency protective measures at 100% and debris at 75%. And the state has confirmed that they will pay for half of the local match. The additional categories for the damages to public infrastructure, our threshold, which must be met, is approximately $2 million. At the $25 million level, we've exceeded or almost reached the threshold for the entire I would like to mention also the excellent work of our social media team. They did some incredible work, and we've received compliments widespread over the number of Facebook posts and tweets and text messages that went out. People felt that they had access to the information that they needed to make good decisions. We did have a lot of challenges with the EOC itself, as you know, in addition to losing water, and then we had a sewer line rupture. We had to have porta potties brought in, and then we had mosquitoes. So we did have quite a few issues, but we had a fantastic team that was working together, coordinating to keep the public safe.
And I will say amen to that. And I was thoroughly, thoroughly impressed. I wrote an op-ed that was in the paper, I believe, yesterday, but if you didn't read it, basically I just, it was my first rodeo. I'd never been involved with anything like this before, and I was just thoroughly impressed with the coordination, how smoothly everything went despite the event itself and the events occurring in the EOC building. So anyway, we just, we just have a terrific county working for us and a lot of really, really good people. Thank you. Frank?
Thank you, Commissioner. Despite the impact that Hurricane Irma had on our county, I did want to take just a minute to recognize the good things that many of us, as you've already noted, witnessed or were part of as the storm system approached and moved through and beyond our county. Now, there was, you know, as you've indicated, outstanding effort by county staff who were activated for many days and long hours, including the overnight shifts at the emergency operations center, at 21 shelters that were open for the evacuees, at consolidated and relocated fire stations throughout the county, including even an employee-run shelter that we had some crews at. We had operators that stayed overnight at various, four different wastewater treatment facilities, and many employees in departments like Public Works who were out in the field literally until minutes before tropical storm winds arrived, requiring their evacuation from both Beachside and Merritt Island, trying to keep pumps running to protect citizens and their property and to respond to damage and other effects from Irma. Once the storm passed, we had over 1,500 employees that made this type of sacrifice for county residents while leaving their own families at home or in some alternate sites. While recovery is ongoing, I want to commend them for their dedication, their hard work, and for the professionalism they all showed in through this challenging time. I also wanted to recognize the cooperation of many of the agencies who were with us on the forefront of this event. They were activated and played key roles in helping getting our residents prepared and safely through Irma, and they included Brevard Public Schools, the Brevard County Sheriff's Office, Florida Highway Patrol, Florida Department of Health in Brevard, United Way 211 Brevard, the Salvation Army, the American Red Cross, Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, and many other partner agencies. Another highlight was the partnership that we had with county and municipal leaders who stayed in touch with us daily, planning, coordinating, and cooperating in ways that helped us address some of the biggest concerns in the storm's aftermath, that included restoration of an integrity of the water plants, which were issues that we faced, both on a countywide level as well as municipal level, ensuring the safety and well-being of those in assisted living facilities that were left without power, going and checking on those that we couldn't come in communication with or contact, going on-site to those facilities, make sure everything was okay, and then working together to ensure it was safe for our children to head back to school yesterday. I want to also recognize Florida Power and Light, who were able to do what they did in a relatively short period of time. And then I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the commissioners and your staffs for also rolling up your sleeves, something that, you know, the public may not be aware of. You know, several of you and your staffs were there working at the EOC, helping in shelters, working at shelters, and assisting us even in surveying and assessing the damage as the storm finally moved north and out of our county. You know, I hope that all the board would agree with me that the leadership and incident command, that skills that were exhibited by what I would describe as a world-class emergency management team was evident as they guided us through the preparation and the response to Hurricane Irma, and they continue to manage and coordinate the significant recovery efforts that are underway to assist our community. And finally, I want to thank the volunteers who paid, played an extremely important role at the emergency operations center and also in recovery. Agencies that donate their time, their services, and provide much-needed aid to those who needed water, food, and other assistance. It was a collective effort, and I think it reflects some great relationships that we have in our community with the states, the cities, and our leadership teams, with faith-based organizations that all work with that single purpose in mind, for the safety and well-being of our residents. So I'm very thankful to be part of that leadership team and appreciate what the board has done to get us to the point where we are today.
Thank you, Frank. Okay, let's move on to resolutions. We have a presentation by Brevard Health Alliance. Morning.
I agree. What a great place to live, huh? And it takes sometimes this kind of natural disaster to bring us all together and celebrate this kind of partnership and work to see the great kind of leadership that we have across this organization. I'd like to first of all thank you for having us this morning and to share a little bit about our organization and introduce this morning we have with us Megan Anderson, our COO, and Austin Helton, our CFO. So what we'd like to do is share with you just a little bit about Brevard Health Alliance. It's really your asset. We are a private, not-for-profit federally qualified health center. We're a 501(c)(3) with receipt of a little bit of federal dollars that help fill in the blanks to be able to provide affordable, accessible care to all citizens across the county, from MEMS to Malabar. And we are here to respond to the needs of the individuals' health care across the county. So I'm going to share a little bit of the statistics and how we got here. So we started, and this is sort of the early years, we became an FQHC. We're incorporated in 2005. Our predecessor organization, some of you that have been here for many years, was called Hope. We were a Department of Homes Regional Medical Center even before health first was created. So we were a department called Hope Health Outreach Prevention and Education, and we existed with two fixed site clinics. One was in Melbourne and one was in Palm Bay, and a mobile unit. And that mobile unit existed as a bridge for individuals that were living at Wickham Park, homeless, individuals that were going to daily bread, really went to many campsites throughout the county. And we continue that work through our mobile units. We had 6,500 annual encounters a year, and that is defined by the feds as a face-to-face visit. So that's a 15, 20-minute face-to-face visit with a doctor, a dentist, or a psychologist. We provided acute care for uninsured adults at that point, and in 2005, we wrote a competitive grant, which you have, we had unanimous support by the county commission at that point to be able to move forward with funding to become what's called a federally qualified health center. Most every county in the state of Florida, I think Brevard and one other county on the west coast at that point did not have one. I heard, I heard a lot of things at that point when we were filing that paperwork that why do we need one of these things? Who are these people we're going to provide access to? And really, quite honestly, these are the folks that, they're our neighbors, they're our friends, they're the folks that are living one paycheck from the next, that just are vulnerable of losing their insurance. Or that's kind of how it sounded at the very beginning, and then the bottom fell out with the Space Center. And that's not who we provided services to. It was a completely different group of folks that were coming to us. But that's not the typical norm of individuals that come to a fairly qualified health center. But it's our responsibility to care for any individual that might come across our threshold. So at this point, Brevard Health Alliance has clinics in Rockledge, Malabar, Melbourne, across this, on Silver Palm, across from the Sharing Center, not too far from homes, Palm Bay on Babcock. Port St. John is our newest clinic, and we opened that in partnership with Space Coast Health Foundation. On Sarno is a large regional center. In Titusville, a partnership with Parish Medical Center, and two mobile units. At this point, our strategy is to have regional centers, and regional centers are defined as a congregation of adult medical services that are provided by board-certified internal med physicians, board-certified pediatricians for the children that are 18 years and under, dental services that provide oral health through dental hygienist and dentists, and emergency dental services, and psychiatric services, as well as psychology services. And those services are provided through a medical home model, through an integrated-type delivery system. So the patient, the idea is that the patient receives the services they need at the particular time they need them in an integrated fashion, not à la carte. So they're all delivered through the same EMR or electronic medical record, so they consume services in a very efficient fashion. That's the idea of FQHC. And the mobile units, we have one that's mobile medical and one that's mobile medical and dental, and they continue to provide services throughout the community, at churches where social services and partnerships exist that congregate for services around individuals that may be homeless or may be in a marginal situation that can't access services at a fixed-site clinic. And then from those regional centers, there are satellite clinics. So right at this point, we have two regional centers, one at Port St. John, one at Sarno. We need one in west Palm Bay. Palm Bay, I'm not telling you anything that you don't already know, is growing like crazy out towards and beyond 95, and Titusville has some access issues. So we've got our satellite clinics probably covering the majority of the area, but we do need another regional center to provide access to support more areas of Palm Bay and the Titusville area. We don't have dental. So these are the services I've already spoken to you about that we provide. Family Peds Adult Dental, Pediatric Dental Behavioral Health. The service that we opened about nine months ago is a required service, OBGYN, more on the OB side than the GYN, and that's for women that receive emergency Medicaid, meet a financial criteria or in this country illegally, and don't have any support services and are pregnant. And medication assistance program. We provide about $9 million a year in free medications for individuals that have no support in that area. And our strategy and philosophy is why provide the medical visit if you can't provide the medications? So that's between the free medication programs and the ability to purchase medications at a deeply discounted relationship through the big pharma companies. We enable probably, what, Austin? How many since our inception? CFO knows the exact number. In 52 million in free pharmaceuticals since our inception. So that's what our patient mix looks like. If you have no insurance or you have one of the Affordable Care Act insurance products, which are not kind to individuals that are poor because they have, on the outpatient side, I will say, they have large deductibles, and most traditional physicians will not see these patients. We see most of them in our offices because of the high deductibles. We put them, we treat them as uninsured patients and put them on the sliding scale. The average uninsured patient pays $5 at our clinics, and that's for the visit and anything else that happens. That's for the pharmaceuticals, that's for the diagnostics, and that's for anything that needs to happen in terms of nurse visits, supplies, or education. That's our patient mix, 32% uninsured. It's more like 47% on the adult side, Medicaid, Medicare, the Affordable Care Act, and traditional commercial. And those are mostly children that have chosen our pediatricians or have continued with our pediatricians. We made a decision very early on to have the brightest and most engaged physicians if we were going to care for the sickest patients in the community. That's the only way that we felt like we were going to change the needle on population health improvement. It was a challenge at the beginning. It's, it's become an easier task as we move forward in our development. So in 2016, we've seen almost 50,000 patients. You can see the numbers up there. Our annual budget going into this next fiscal year, which starts October 1st, is going to be right around $30 million. About $4.5 billion of that comes from the feds. The rest is third-party revenue through Medicaid and Medicare. You can see the federal grants, patient revenue, and patient revenue is defined by the third-party revenue, not out of somebody's pocket. Since we began in 2005, this is what we have provided to the community. I think the number that's most staggering to me is if you say 105,000 patients served, what are we, 550 now as a community?
580.
580 we are now. Wow. So that's one in eight, seven, six patients have been individual citizens, have been our patient at some point. You know, the hope is that you'll stabilize and not need those services. Some choose to stay with us, but that tells you that we're meeting those individuals that need us when they need us. We are a patient-centered medical home, and we've, in February of 2017, we met the million mark in terms of face-to-face medical visits. That's our mobile unit. How many of you have seen it riding around out there on the streets, have you? So we're your asset. We'd like to continue to have dialogue in terms of what you think. We're doing well. If you think that we're addressing the needs in your particular area of the community, we'd like to try to have very strong partnerships in each area of the county and continue those conversations. The world is changing in terms of health care, as you all well know. It's challenging for hospitals, it's challenging for individual physician groups, and we'd like to be part of the solution, not part of the problem. So any feedback you want to provide to us, we're here, we're your asset. Thank you.
Thank you. And before I present you with our resolution, I just want to make mention to the fact that I visited you guys back in June or July, and I was thoroughly blown away because I don't know much about the medical industry, but I know what we have seems to be broken, and what these folks have to offer could be the solution, just my point of view. But I would encourage any of the other commissioners that haven't been there to visit with you guys, because it is quite amazing. Oh, there's no resolution? Okay, there's no resolution. Thank you for being here, and I appreciate you for what you do for the community. Okay, Mr. Tobias.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And as you are well aware, a couple weeks ago, we had a couple officers who were killed in the line of duty. I asked for a moment of silence. You were very kind to grant that, and you took a step further by offering me the opportunity to put forth a resolution. And while I know these officers served Osceola County, the good citizens of Brevard, myself included, spend a great deal of time in the neighboring counties, and I think it's very important that we recognize all men and women that serve not only their community but the people that travel from outside their community. So I have two resolutions honoring the fallen officers, and with your indulgence, I would like to read the first resolution.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Whereas Officer Matthew Baxter, age 26, was a third-year police officer with the Kissimmee Police Department, who was killed in the line of duty on August 18th, 2017. And whereas Officer Baxter was born and raised in Baltimore, Maryland, in Florida, Officer Baxter enrolled in the Criminal Justice Institute at Valencia College and later joined the Kissimmee Police Department. And whereas Officer Baxter quickly became recognized for his law enforcement abilities, being named first squad leader of his police academy class, Officer Baxter was working to achieve his bachelor's degree. And whereas Officer Baxter was married to and is survived by his wife, Sadia, who is a fellow officer, and by his four children, Sarah, Isabella Zahara, and Sophia. And whereas Officer Baxter is also survived by his mother, Donna Brown, grandparents, Marcel and Elizabeth Brown, and sister Elizabeth, Haley, Hope, and Mia. And whereas Officer Baxter died a hero patrolling the streets of Kissimmee to ensure safety for all who lived in and visited Kissimmee, his heroism will live on in all of the people who Officer Baxter helped and protected while on duty and off duty. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Officer Baxter, be it resolved that the Brevard County Board of Commission does hereby recognize and honor Officer Baxter for his service and ultimate sacrifice to the citizens of Kissimmee and central Florida. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 7th day, September 2017.
Do you want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to passage of the resolution.
We have a motion and a second. Anyone wish to vote no? It passes 5-0. And was he not a student at Eastern Florida State?
I had him, according to his background, he was going to Valencia College, which happened to be where-
Okay, well, then the other one, I think, went to, did his, I think he did his police study at Eastern Florida State.
Again, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It would be my intention to drop the resolutions off with the Kissimmee Police Department. You're more than welcome to join me, or I'd be more than willing to do it. And I know it's only a small token of the sacrifice these individuals made, but I- It would be my intention to drop the resolutions off with the Kissimmee Police Department. You're more than welcome to join me, or I'd be more than willing to do it. And I know it's only a small token of the sacrifice these individuals made, but I think it's important that we recognize their ultimate sacrifice. So the second one, and this is honoring Richard Sam Howard. Whereas Richard Sam Howard, age 36, was a sergeant with the Kissimmee Police Department who was killed in the line of duty on August 19, 2017. And whereas Sergeant Howard was a 10-year veteran of the Kissimmee Police Department and recently earned the rank of sergeant. Whereas Sergeant Howard was a veteran of the United States Air Force before joining the department. Sergeant Howard served four years in the Army, including two tours in Iraq. Whereas Sergeant Howard was born in Bartow, Florida, and his childhood dream was to be a police officer. He excelled in numerous sports at Osceola High School. And whereas Sergeant Howard was married to and is survived by his wife, Billy Joe, and his daughter, Unique. And whereas Sergeant Howard was committed to serving his community and known for his sense of humor. And whereas Sergeant Howard died a hero when he responded to a call for backup by one of his fellow officers. His heroism will live on in all of the people who Sergeant Howard helped and protected while on duty and off duty. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Brevard County Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize and honor Sergeant Richard Sam Howard for his service and ultimate sacrifice to the citizens of Kissimmee and central Florida. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 7th day of September 2017. I'd like to make a motion for the passage of the resolution.
We have a motion and a second. Anyone wish to vote no? It passes 5-0.
Again, I don't have many of these resolutions, so I greatly appreciate the indulgence and the weight that we place for the service that these people do, not only the officers here in Brevard County, but statewide. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And prayerfully, we never have to do that for a local officer. Okay, moving on to the next resolution. Proclaiming October 2017 as Manufacturing Month in Brevard County. I have the honor of doing that. Whereas the Manufacturers Association of Florida Space Coast is an initiative of the Economic Development Commission of Florida Space Coast that seeks to promote manufacturing through Made in Brevard, a joint program of the EDC, Cocoa Beach Regional Chamber of Commerce, Melbourne Regional Chamber of Commerce of East Central Florida, the Greater Palm Bay Chamber of Commerce, and Titusville Area Chamber of Commerce. Whereas Made in Brevard is focused on promoting and celebrating companies that manufacture products in Brevard County, Florida, and changing the perception of manufacturing careers through the EDC's Talent Asset Pipeline for Manufacturing Program and in conjunction with the Career Source Brevard Advancing in Manufacturing Sector Strategy. Whereas Made in Brevard, the EDC Talent Asset Pipeline Program and the Career Source Brevard Advancing in Manufacturing Sector Strategy Program seek to educate manufacturers, raise awareness about manufacturing careers, enable platforms for certified skilled development, and enhance manufacturing job placement. And whereas the state of Florida recognizes the month of October as Manufacturing Month as an effective way to expand knowledge about the value of manufacturing brings to Florida's economy and to showcase the high-skilled, high-paid manufacturing jobs needed by the industry. And whereas Manufacturing Day is a national grassroots movement occurring on the first Friday of October and is the economic driver of strong communities, with over 500 manufacturers in Brevard County, Florida. But I bet not many of you even thought about Brevard County being a manufacturing center. We have 500 manufacturers in the county. Whereas during Manufacturing Day and Manufacturing Month, U.S. manufacturers open their doors to showcase modern manufacturing and foster interest in manufacturing careers. Whereas Made in Brevard, through MASC and the EDC TAP for Manufacturing Program and Career Source Brevard Advancing in Manufacturing Sector Strategy, is encouraging Brevard County, Florida manufacturers, organizations, and schools to participate in Manufacturing Day. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners hereby proclaims October 2017 as Manufacturing Month in Brevard and recognizes Made in Brevard as a partnership of the EDC and the four area chambers of commerce and the many dedicated local manufacturers. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 19th day of September 2017. I so move. We have a motion and a second. All those opposed? It passes 5-0. Congratulations. Would you like to come up?
Thank you for having us today.
Thank you. Thank all of you for coming.
My name's Michael Ennis. I'm a manufacturing engineer at Harris Corporation in Melbourne. I'm also the chairman of the Manufacturing Association of Space Coast and an adjunct professor of engineering technology down at Eastern Florida State College. I want to thank you for making October Manufacturing Month for the third year in a row. With Manufacturing Month, all of our manufacturers have the opportunity to open their doors to high schools and colleges in Brevard County so the students can come in and actually see what we do in manufacturing. Manufacturing has changed a lot over the years. It's not like it was when I started, when it's a dirty job, you had to take a shower when you got done with work. Now we work in clean rooms. It's good, stable work. It's work that will make a career for people. We also have, once our students come into our manufacturing areas, they go to Eastern Florida, sign up for the engineering technology program, sign up for the certified production technician credential, so they can get the jobs at these companies and start a career here in Brevard County. Thank you very much for making October Manufacturing Month.
I'd just like to say, it was really good for myself. I went to, had a number of tours of different manufacturing settings, which I didn't really expect it to be as it was. Very organized, very high-tech. No more is there the hanging over a smelter in a big iron factory or something. It's not like that anymore. And the skill levels required now are much higher. And our whole country and especially our areas is really having to step up to meet the skill levels we need to do this type of work. And with Eastern Florida State and some other organizations like yourself, I think we're on the right track. It's just going to take a while. But I really do appreciate everything that y'all do. I appreciate everything that goes along with that. Thank you.
If you come forward, please. Well, I embarrass you with all this good stuff. I just want to offer a disclaimer before I get started here. I was, first time I met you, I was, what do you call it, applicant for a jury. I was on a jury, and this guy really, really thoroughly impressed me. So that's what started this whole thing. So fast forward to today. Whereas the Honorable Judge Maxwell, a sixth-generation Floridian who was born in Melbourne, has been a lifelong resident of Brevard, where he attended Brevard Public Schools, kindergarten through 12th grade, prior to attending Stetson University. And whereas his studies at Stetson were interrupted when he volunteered for service in the United States Marine Corps. What else, right? Where his tenure included 13 months forward deployment, including the Tet Offensive of 1968. Then Corporal Maxwell was awarded the Navy Marine Corps Achievement Medal with V for Valor, the Marine Combat Action Ribbon, Presidential Unit Citation, Navy Unit Commendation, Meritorious Unit Commendation, Vietnamese Cross of Gallantry, Civic Action Medal, Vietnamese Service Medal, and the Vietnamese Campaign Medal, all for his exemplary service. Let me take a breath after all that. Whereas, following the completion of his service, Judge Maxwell returned to Stetson, where he completed his Bachelor of Science in Biology, followed by a year of teaching at Brevard Public Schools prior to attending the University of Florida Law School, where he earned his Juris Doctor in 1977. And whereas, upon admission to the bar, Judge Maxwell served on the Young Lawyers Board of Governors, then went on to practice law in Melbourne for over 20 years. And whereas, became a board-certified trial attorney in 1992, which remains current today. And during this time, Judge Maxwell remained active in local civic and government organizations, including president of the Kiwanis, chairman of the Sebastian Inlet District, and teaching at BCC and FIT, among other things. And whereas, in 1998, Judge Maxwell was elected to the 18th Circuit, where he successfully served three terms prior to taking senior judge status. And whereas, while serving on the bench, he served the Child Advocate of the Year Award from the Guardian Ad Lightum Program, became an adjunct professor at FIT, and authored several publications. And whereas, while enjoying retirement, Judge Maxwell relishes his occasional assignments on the bench, filling in for colleagues, meanwhile continuing to write professional publications. Did you know you did all this stuff?
I can barely remember any of it.
Whereas, throughout his service to this country and his outstanding career, Judge Maxwell remains steadfast in his commitment to the community, public safety, and protecting citizens' rights. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners does hereby recognize Judge George Maxwell for distinguished service to the people of the Brevard County and honors him on the occasion of his retirement. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 19th day of September 2017. I so move. We have a motion and a second. Anyone wish to vote no? It passes 5-0. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you very much. Chairman Smith, Commissioner Isnerdy, Commissioner Pritchett, Commissioner Barfield, Commissioner Tobias, and Attorney and Counselor Scott Knox. I've had the opportunity to stand here many times over the course of the last almost 40 years in practice. And in 1999, at the actual formal squaring in ceremony here, which was about a three, two months after I'd been elected and a month after I'd been on the bench, I pledged to the people of Brevard County that I would do my best to do my duty. It's right out of the Scouteth. But I hope that almost 19 years later, I have acquitted that pledge. One famous Virginian once said that you should always strive to do your duty. You can do no more. Hopefully, you will do no less. So with that pledge, at least in my conscience fulfilled, I have taken leave of the active bench. Since I've gone off the bench, I've been filling in. Actually found out, being a sitting county, I'm a circuit judge, but I have filled in for county judges. And if I didn't know it was so much fun, I would have probably run for it five years after law school. It was, really have had a good time. I'm enjoying it. I don't know if I should say this here, but all the warrants for the recent drug sweep in South Brevard County were signed by me. I spent the better part of a half a day sitting with the detectives, going over to make sure that what we execute, maybe a bad choice of words, but what we execute in our process is fair and meets the constitutional standards. I'm blessed to teach Introduction to Law at Florida Tech. And if any of you want to take the course, maybe go over and take Professor Tobias's course sometime, but you're welcome to come visit anytime you'd like to. We have a fun class, and you can see me be put on the spot by college sophomores and juniors. So with that, I want to thank my wife, my former law clerk, Kim Swarthout, Judge Roberts, and Judge Dugan, who both came here today, my two daughters, Angela and Chelsea, and my four grandchildren, I promised, Mackenzie, Maria Debalier, Kevin Antonio Debalier, Robert William Buckholz Jr., who's 27 months old, and Jane Alexandra, Jane Alexandra Buckholz, who's 10 weeks old. On behalf of those people, I hope I've left them some legacy that they can be proud of. Thank you.
I get to do the next one also. Would Claire Ellis and Sandy Michelson come forward, please? While I read this. We're proclaiming support of the Xanta Club of Melbourne's ongoing fight against human trafficking. So we thank you for being here and for all that you do. Let me read this. Whereas human trafficking is a form of modern-day slavery and is a crime against humanity that violates the most basic human rights and deprives victims of their freedom. And whereas human trafficking occurs when a person is recruited, harbored, obtained, or exported through force, fraud, or coercion for the purposes of sexual exploitation, forced labor, involuntary servitude, debt bondage, and other methods of slavery. And whereas human trafficking affects as many as 27 million people worldwide, including an estimated 2 million children who are trafficked for child labor and sexual exploitation. And whereas, human traffickers target men, women, and children, both U.S. citizens and foreign nationals, isolating them from society and supportive networks, and exploiting them for personal and monetary gain. And whereas, human traffickers view Florida as one of the most attractive destinations and transit points for their victims, and Florida accounts for the third-highest call volume to the National Human Trafficking Resource Center. And whereas Floridians are committed to protecting the vulnerable and ending human trafficking through continued prevention, prosecution, education, and awareness. Whereas Floridians are committed to sending a strong message to perpetrators that Florida is a zero-tolerance state for all forms of human trafficking. And whereas Floridians are committed to protecting victims' rights and restoring their dignity and freedom. And now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of County Commissioners does hereby proclaim their support of the Xanta Club of Melbourne's ongoing fight against human trafficking. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 19th day of September 2017. I so move. We have a motion and a second. Anyone wish to vote no? It passes 5-0. Congratulations. You have the mic.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chairman Smith and Commissioners. Xanta has been fighting human trafficking here internationally and locally for over 10 years. We were the first ones to be able to train law enforcement about human trafficking. We're members of the Space Coast Human Trafficking Task Force. We work very closely with them, and we do everything in our power to bring awareness of this scourge. And many people still think that it has to do with foreigners. This is not true. These are our own children, our American children are being trafficked. 100,000 to 300,000 children every year are subject to being trafficked. Our runaway children, our children in foster care, children that are searching, looking, things aren't good at home, they're running away. The traffickers know where they are, and they know how to find them. So we appreciate you recognizing us. We fight violence against women and children, period. We partnered with Sheriff Ivy and the Sheriff's Department in a 5K run on October 7th, and it's all about trying to prevent violence against women, along with strangulation that's happening more and more. And we're bringing awareness on that issue to any organization, group that would like to hear us. Thank you very much, and we appreciate this recognition. We're all volunteers, and we all work very hard to continue this fight. Thank you.
We thank you for all you do because I think it is- because I think it is a topic that an awful lot of people don't think about, would prefer not to think about. And so it's important for folks like you to keep it in the forefront because it is a reality. Okay, now we have a rec- resolution recognizing and commending Nana's House.
Kim? And after we're done reading the resolution, if you could talk a little bit about, more in detail about what you've done and what you're doing, what you need, and that sort of thing. I wanted to recognize Nana's House because not only was I excited to hear about what you were doing over there, I am just amazed at how far you've come and how much work. I cannot tell you how hard this woman works. I have not. And everyone talks about it. Everyone says, "Oh, Kim, you know, she's got her heels dug in." And I'm just so proud that this is part in our community. And it just, it makes my heart swell. So anyway. Resolution where Kim Fraj, who along with her husband Eric, founded Nana's House, 100% community-funded Christian children's home in April 2007. And whereas Nana's House provides a safe, secure, and loving home where neglected, abused, needy, and abandoned children can come and experience God's love. And whereas Nana's House receives legal guardianship of children whose parents cannot care for them due to illness, homelessness, or substance abuse, and raises them in a traditional family setting supported 100% by volunteers. And whereas Nana's House currently houses 10 children in two homes, but are constructing a gated community with eight homes to accommodate 40 additional children, a community center, playground, and pool to be opened later this year. And whereas Nana's House also provides parenting classes so that parents can regain custody of their children and get back to a normal life in the most and fast, efficient way possible. And whereas Nana's House believes that healing the hearts of these children through God's love teaches them that they are worth something and were created for a purpose. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, is hereby recognize and commend Nana's House for its hard work and dedication to provide to neglected, abused, needy, and abandoned children. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 19th day of September A.D., 2017. Now I want to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Anyone wish to vote no? It passes 5-0. Congratulations.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I want to say I love our community. I love our county. And thank you for recognizing those officers. I think it's very sad, the disrespect that law enforcement has. And they give their life and put it on the forefront to protect us and keep us safe. So thank you for recognizing those people. And I couldn't do what I do without you guys. As you said, we take in neglected, abused, needy, or abandoned children and we provide a safe, loving home for them. I'm so sorry. And it's amazing to me how you see these little lives transform whenever you take them out of a horrible environment and you put them in a safe, clean, loving, stable environment, how you just see them thrive. And we've had so many different kinds of cases. We've had cases where, you know, the child has never even been loved, never even held a toy in their hand. And then you have situations where grandparents are taking care of their grandchildren and they become terminally ill. We've got a couple of children like that. But the bottom line is all the children that we take in, they're in need of a safe, loving home. And that's what we provide for them. And I think one of the most amazing things about our gated community that we're building in West Melbourne, Florida, is the fact that all of our builders are volunteering their services to head up building our gated community. And I'm kind of overseeing the whole project. And I kind of go out and find contractors and link them in with the builders. And it's amazing, all the relationships that we're seeing formed out there. It's amazing the lives that we're seeing change. Not only are children's lives being changed, but we're actually seeing adult lives being changed just because they can't believe what is going on out there and how, I mean, I can't tell you. I've had builders say, "There's no way you're going to get someone out here to do this." And I, and it's a total God thing because I can make a phone call and like an hour later, I'm calling the builder back. "They're coming to grade that out today, today." And it's just amazing that people are stepping up when they're so busy and the community is so overwhelmed with construction. And yet they're still showing up to do this and they're showing up to do it for free. So it really kind of double blows people's mind. And I absolutely love that. And I just love being a part of this ministry because I am seeing lives change. We're going to have 40 children living on this property. We actually, we got our first CO on our first house in the gated community. I wasn't planning on opening any of the houses until we were done with all of it. Then I got a call for a car full of kids living in a car with a mom for four months, sweating to death in the summer. So let's say we got our CO on a Thursday evening. I got the call Friday morning and thought I was going on vacation for a few days. And yeah, that didn't happen. I worked the whole time I was gone. But we, my house parents said we'd already trained and they'd already gone through all their background screenings. They packed up their house on a Friday night, moved everything on Saturday. We took in all the kids on Sunday and were full. So it's just, it's amazing to me. Just as, I don't know. I just thank y'all. Just thank y'all so much for your support. And please know I couldn't do what I do without you. If you want to volunteer, we are 100% volunteers. We do not receive any state funding. We're funded 100% from donations, just like you and I, from people like you and I. And we're changing lives. And I encourage you to come and check us out. We're fixing the, we're planning our very first, we just got our CO on our community building. So we're going to do our very first grand opening with our commercial building, our community building. We just moved everything in there. Then the storm hit. So I've got to go unpack stuff this week. And I'm going to be putting together a date to have everybody come out and just see what we're doing firsthand. And welcome you to our community building. And then my hope and prayer is to be done with the whole gated community by the end of the year. Everybody thinks I'm insane and I'm starting to believe it. But we could possibly be done by the end of the year. But the latest, our anniversary, which is April 20th. And we will have a big, huge family fun day celebration. We've already got people with music and food and everything. It's going to be a big family fun day. We're going to come in and tour our houses and then we'll close our gate. And then only if you're supposed to be in there, will you be in there. But thank you for helping us love on these children and change their lives. I really appreciate it and I hope that God truly blesses each one of you. And I just can't say how much I love our community and I thank you. So thank you. God bless you. Humbleness and pride. So thank you so much. And again, if anybody wants to get involved with Nana's House, I would love to have you volunteering beside me. Many hands make light work. We've got a big heavy load. So thank y'all so, so much.
I'm hoping you get more enthusiastic at some point in your life. I know. Your reputation precedes you. Thank you. Okay, now we'll move into consent. I do have one speaker card. Mary Hilberg. Mary Hilberg here. Would you like to speak? It's 2A5.
Good morning. I'm Mary Hilberg. I live at 3780 Sierra Drive in Merritt Island. And I'm the chair on the North Merritt Island Dependent Special Advisory Board. And your item is number 2A5, board confirmation for a North Merritt Island Special Dependant District Board Member for District 2. And we have Jim Carver No. And he's volunteered to, as a stakeholder in our area, to represent our people and to work as a volunteer. So I'd like to support him and respectfully request that all of you do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, are there any items that any of the commissioners would like to pull?
I'd like to pull 2C5.
Any others? Okay, if we have no other issues, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of 2C5. We have a motion and a second. Anyone wish to vote no? It passes 5-0.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Barfield, you have the floor.
I'd just like to make a comment. We did today appoint Mr. Holmes, Andy Holmes, as of the, in Public Works. And just want to say what a stellar job he's done. And I think it's well-deserved. And I have to say, with the recent events, he's been right in the middle of everything. So Andy, congratulations. Just go ahead and introduce this, Forrest, please.
All right. 2C5. This is requesting permission for purchasing to solicit our annual supply bids, proposals, and requests for qualifications for the next fiscal year 1718. We're asking permission to solicit those term bids or those formal solicitations to authorize renewal options and also authorize the chairman to execute the contracts on contract renewals. These are the term agreements that purchasing solicits annually on a reoccurring basis. And these are our typical ones that we do do every year. And this is the permission so that the departments do not have to come back with the individual agendas requesting this permission.
I, when I was reading through this, my concern is, and you may already have this taken care of somehow, but some of these, when you look at the annual bid quote proposal list, some of them are very extensive. I mean, 2 million, 3.5 million, some other ones that are along that range. I just want to make sure, one of them within solid waste is 12.4 million. I just want to make sure that there is the controls in place, that the commission has approval to, approval authority on some of these larger ones.
Right. On some of the large ones, we do put, because they are reoccurring. If for some reason that a contract, for some reason we need to terminate a contract or we need to go back out, we do put it in there so that we at least can continue with the service. But if we had a large item that needed to be brought back to the board for their attention or our approval, we would do that individually.
So I'm not clear on what you mean by that. I mean, if it's estimated annual expenditure of 12.4 million, for instance, in one area.
Right.
So what is the cutoff? At what point does it come back to us?
At this point, on this agenda, the item is not required to come back. This is requesting the approval for the solicitation, the approval to solicit, and authorization to execute the contract. But if we had a disruption in service of a large contract that we had to come back and go back out and resolicit, that item would come back to the board. That would be at the discretion of our office.
What dollar figure would that be at?
There's not a dollar figure. I would say it's more based on the services, the large services, contracted services. We do not have a dollar amount specified to bring back to the board.
Well, I have to say, I'm not, I think we should just table this and bring it back another time. I'm not comfortable to have enough information here. I want to make absolutely sure that the transparency, not transparency. I want to make sure that this, I have a good understanding of the dollar figures and how much and what controls there are.
Okay.
So I would recommend we table it.
Any objection to tabling that from the commission? Okay, we'll table this issue.
To the next meeting?
Right.
Okay.
No, we don't. Mr. Knox, do we need a motion to table it?
Yes, you do.
Okay, well, then that's what I said. Okay, we have a motion.
I'll make a motion. We table it.
Commissioner Barfield makes a motion and Commissioner Pritchett seconds that. Any comments? Anyone wish to vote no? It passes 5-0. Motion is tabled. We will move into public comments. Sarah Ann Conkling.
Good morning. Welcome back after the storm. Thank you all for your extremely hard work and service for the citizens of our community. And I know that some of you were on scene at the EOC and other places, sleeping in very interesting circumstances. So thank you for being willing to roll up your sleeves for our citizens. I'm here this morning to talk a little bit about Hurricane Irma and the disproportionate effects on the poor that happen when a tragedy such as this strikes. Some of this is from my own personal experience of needing to deal with the storm. First of all, we're going to have a lot of people with lost food in their refrigerators. The food cupboards are already being extremely hard hit. Some of them were not able to get out and get their food during the storm. So they're low and they're getting slammed. The only official reimbursement for people who lost food is, may come through the state for food stamp recipients. That's actually being worked on. But we have people in our community who are not food stamp recipients, who are still working paycheck to paycheck and lost the entire contents of their refrigerator during this storm. We also have people who have home damage that does not rise to the threshold where FEMA will come in and provide individual assistance. You actually have to have an unlivable home for FEMA to come in and provide you housing assistance during and after a storm. So people who have some house damage, but their house isn't deemed unlivable, will have to somehow come up with the money for those repairs. In addition to that, almost everyone in our county lost a week of paid work unless your employer was kind enough to pay you for not being there. You probably lost a week of pay. And we have people who have just additional life crises that hit on top of it. I heard the other day from a family who, you know, lost power, I heard the other day from a family who, you know, lost power, lost water and cocoa for several days. And then they had a fragile, ill family member who had to go to the hospital. Right away, they developed an infection, and the hospital wanted several thousand dollars right then to let them in to the hospital. So I won't say which hospital. May they rest in infamy. But, but people are having to deal with these kinds of crises as the storm aftermath unfolds. So why am I bringing all of this up this morning? Oh, one other thing that has to be paid for, if you're someone like me who's disabled, I actually had to pay people to pick up things in my yard and put them by the street because I can't physically do that. So that's something that I personally paid for that's not a budgeted expense, obviously. So why am I here talking about all this this morning? We have an opportunity as commissioners to do something really right and good right now, today. Today, at this meeting and/or the budget hearing tonight, we can restore the money that was taken out of this budget for the Community Action Agency, which helps our most vulnerable citizens, the people who lost that week of work, the people who lost the food in their fridge, the single mothers who are struggling with a house full of kids who are hungry. We can restore that money, and we can also restore the money to the community-based organizations that are going to get slammed starting right now and who began to get slammed during this hurricane. I think as people of conscience and as people who are dedicated to all of our citizens, not just those who have the resources to weather this storm well, not just the people who were able to evacuate, I realize my time's gone, but thank you for considering this and thank you for bringing this up again so that we can better serve our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick Supran.
Hi. I was here about a month ago or so discussing the renewable energy and--
Sir, you name and address.
Nick Supuran, 4860 Verona Circle, Melbourne. The reason why I'm here is I'm trying to find out if there's any help that was forthcoming from the county for the renewable energy law that the state of Florida passed with the voters voting 73 percent saying that they want to encourage renewable energy. Unfortunately, in the county, the renewable energy is discouraged by the city of Melbourne, by most associations, and so far I haven't seen any encouragement from the county laws. And I'm asking you to pay attention to that. I asked your office to look into that, and nothing happened so far that I know of. County attorney looked at the state law, and he recognized that it does apply to the county and applies to all the people that live in the county because we voted, we the people voted for that, and you represent the voters. So you should pay attention to what we want. That's what I'm asking you to do. And I just had a case where I went to the Melbourne County, to the city, and they just told me flat out, hey, we're not getting paid to enforce the state laws, we're not going to pay attention to it. And that's ridiculous when the people voted to encourage it. By the same token, my own homeowners association refuses to acknowledge that they have to pay attention to the renewable energy. They changed the bylaws illegally with things that were against the Florida statute and they didn't care about it. Also, they claim that a tree has higher priority than somebody's right to renewable energy. So if a tree is blocking your sun and that's your property, they're trying to do solar renewable energy, their position is, hey, the tree's been there before, we don't have to give you rights to the sun. And that's ridiculous. The county needs to put its foot down and say, the people voted on it, they have the right to the renewable energy, whether it's geothermal or wind or solar, whatever they need, and whatever stands in front of them should be removed. The local court judges and everything else should pay attention to anything being passed that's illegal against the state law. And by the same token, you should make it aware to all the cities--
You have 30 seconds.
All the cities in the county should be notified that they better start paying attention to the state law because that's what it is. We voted for it, the people, and it's our law. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Mr. Knox, could you maybe give us a brief paper, some meeting coming up, so we fully understand this?
I'll do that.
All right, thank you. Yeah, that's all the comments that we have under the public comments. We'll move into public hearings. 4A.
4A is a petition to vacate a 12-foot public utility easement in Barefoot Bay. The petitioner owns lots on each side of this easement and would like to construct a screen room over a portion of the land occupied by the easement. We've received no objections to this request.
I make a motion we grant the petition to vacate.
Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion to, by Commissioner Barfield, a second by Commissioner Isnardi. Anyone wish to vote no? Pass is 5-0. 4B.
4B is a request for the Board of County Commissioners to consider the approval of a developers' agreement between RMC Palm Bay, Rivera Drive, West Melbourne, and Boulevard County. The agreement will reimburse RMC of Palm Bay $727,782 in transportation impact fees for intersection improvements at Palm Bay Road and Durham Drive. In addition, the agreement will vest the developers for transportation concurrency for 10 years. There'll be a second reading of this agreement on October 5, 2017. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
We have one speaker, Philip Nauru. Naur. I can't read your writing, but I know who you are. I was just going to say, you have the handwriting of a doctor.
Commissioners, Philip Naur, 1795 West Nelson Boulevard in Melbourne. We're just here to take any questions. I have the developer here, and I've got some of the engineers here. We would respectfully request approval of the agreement. And I would just add for the record, it's been, it's been a pleasure to work with the county staff and the city staff in getting all of this to this point. Take any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Not hearing any comments from the board, do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the developers' agreement.
Do we have a second? We have a second by Commissioner Pritchett. Anyone wish to vote no? Pass is 5-0. 4C.
Mr. Chairman, this is the commission's lobbying ordinance, which is half a public hearing. It covers registration of lobbyists, four-year employment, and lobbying ban on commissioners after they vacate their office, and prohibits gifts being received by commissioners in favor than $25 from lobbyists per year. And also deals with travel by the commissioners and getting approval before the board before they go for out-of-state travel.
Pleasure of the board. I have one speaker. Ben Wilson.
Good morning, commissioners. Good morning, Mr. Obade, Mr. Knox. I'm Ben Wilson. I'm the Associate Corporate Counsel for the Vieira Company and Aduan Sons. Wish had one minor clarification request on this ordinance. In the definition of lobbyist where they have the exclusions, in exclusion one, we'd like to have the term citizen changed to person because person's a defined term and includes both individuals and corporate entities. And we think that makes sense also based on exception eight, which there's an exception for people who are employees of a corporation or a consultant. So that's our only request.
Which section was that?
It's in the definition of lobbyist on page four, exception number one. And our request is just to change the term citizen to person because person is a defined term on page five. It includes not only an individual but business entities. And we think that makes sense based on the exception for employees. And that was our only request. Thank you.
I think that's probably a good change.
Comments from the board? So can I have a motion to accept and include the change recommended from citizen to person?
Make that motion?
Commissioner Pritchett makes a motion. Do we have a second? Have a second by Commissioner Barfield. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Pass is 5-0. 4D.
Commissioners, on this particular item, staff would request that we continue to the next scheduled board meeting on October 10 to give staff the opportunity to clarify some of the language that is under revision. We need to make it a little clearer, and when we do that, we'll bring it back on the 10th for the board's consideration.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett. Table to October 10. Do we have a second? Have a second by Commissioner Isnardi. Anyone wish to vote no? Pass is 5-0. 4E.
Commissioner, this item requests the restructuring of various parts of the organization. It's outlined in the agenda request. I've discussed it with each commissioner. Basically, it recreates the mosquito control department, and it also moves facilities from currently under central services to public works, and also puts fire rescue under a community services group. Those changes, as well as renaming the remaining group, the support services group, adding budget office to that, and that group will report directly to me at this point.
Pleasure of the board.
Make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Isnardi makes a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Pass is 5-0. Moving into unfinished business. 5A.
Commissioners, we're, this is a consideration for the status of the Hurricane Matthew appeal of the private roads. We are seeking guidance from the board. If you remember correctly, FEMA denied our request for reimbursements for those private roads occurred during Hurricane Matthew debris cleanup. We went through the process of appealing it. The appeal went to the Florida Department of Emergency Management. They never processed it forward, and it was never filed with FEMA. The potential, the cost of the collection on the private roads was $391,000. What we're asking is what we, a series of, what do we do now? Direct staff to file for a public records request to see exactly what happened at the state level. Direct staff to prepare a letter to the governor and legislative delegation for the chairman's signature requesting compensation from the state or any other directions that the board wishes to go.
Commissioner Isnardi, you have the floor.
I want to ask you to go into the long, drawn-out story of how we got here with this FEMA reimbursement, but it was my understanding that they changed the rules and that they no longer, they no longer were collecting, or reimbursing for collection on private roads, and that it was sort of, they changed the rules close to the time that we applied for reimbursement. Is that how it happened?
Traditionally, FEMA has, at the beginning, never approved the roads, the private roads. What traditionally has happened since I've been, since the year 2000 and probably from the late 90s, is that we make an application, we present all our documentation, and at the end, we have always gotten approved for these roads. So initial denial, then we go through the process, and then we get approval for them. So, in reality, through the years, we've always gotten reimbursed for this, for these expenses in private roads.
But they, but they're not really obliged to reimburse for them? Is that the problem?
No, the rule is for, on public roads. Public right-ofways is what they use, the term that they use, public right-ofways. We had gone to the board in the year 2004 after we ran into more than normal difficulties in getting FEMA to approve this. We came to the board and asked for guidance on what the board wanted us to do to, if there was another hurricane, to collect on the private roads, and the answer at that time was yes. The reasoning behind it was that the, everybody contributed, or all the residents contributed, no matter if they were on private roads or not, they contributed to the hurricane reserve.
Right. Okay. I guess, you know, at least my opinion on the matter, since I have the floor, is, is why, like, when were we denied? I mean, why haven't, why haven't we been more aggressive with this if the state, I mean, if they failed to file the appeal to FEMA?
When they failed, when they notified us that they had failed to file the approval to FEMA, we were one of at least 50 that I'm aware of. And at that time, the time already had elapsed. There was a lot of confusion after Matthew about filing directly to FEMA, filing directly to the state. The state gave us instructions to, all the appeals for the private roads were to be filed through the state and not directly to FEMA, like had occurred in the past. So we followed the instructions of the state, and the state failed us.
But we're the only county this happened to?
No, ma'am. There's 50 other entities. What we don't know is the circumstances, whether it were cities, whether it was just Matthew, whether it was appeals of other thing regarding private or public roads. We just don't have the information, and they have not been willing to share it with us.
Okay.
Commissioner Pritchett, you have the floor.
Has the Florida Department of Emergency Management already owned the fact that they didn't file it?
Yes, ma'am. We have received letters from some of their officials saying that they did not file it on time.
So if we already know that fact, if we did number one and we did the public records document, is, will that persuade FEMA to want to? No? Or is that just something we're doing as formality to maybe go to number two?
I think part of the problem is that we don't know what happened at the state level. We don't know if this sat on somebody's desk, that person was let go, or transferred to another job, or whatever. In order to fix the problem, in my opinion, we would have to know the circumstances of the problem. And then, at that point in time, we can maybe propose to the state, look, what you did before did not work, can we change it so this doesn't occur again? But at this point in time, we are operating completely blind.
Okay, so we'll have a little bit of proof in our hands, and we'll have an ability to move forward with maybe some kind of solution for this?
I would hope so, because being confrontational at this point in time, I don't think is going to get us anywhere.
Right. Okay, I'm, I'm, are you wanting to do number one and then number two at the same time? Or you want to get the commission to go ahead and allow you to do both as you see it's timely to do so?
That would be the commissioner's choice, but I would think that you would want the information that we can get from the state before you can make the next decision.
Right, I'm thinking you're going to come back with the information, seeing that they've already acknowledged that they are the ones that are responsible for the error. So I guess it's just getting the proof in hand to move forward?
Yes, ma'am, because I would like to, when I talk to you, I can, I understand the complete problem and what occurred, and I can explain it.
Okay.
Because right now, I cannot.
Okay.
Commissioner Barfield, you have the floor.
So, when we file the appeal, when we, we request the cost reimbursement, that goes directly to FEMA?
It had gone in the past, this last hurricane, the state instructed us that it would go to the state first.
Well, I know we have one here, number two, to send a letter to the governor, legislative delegation, with chairman's signature. I think what we need to do is talk to our legislative delegation and say, change the rules so we go direct to FEMA. We don't have to go through the middleman and take the risk of it, of us not getting the money again.
Generally speaking, and I'm going to go to the way past. Our relationships with the state have been pretty good. This last hurricane, it was not so much. This last hurricane, FEMA has responded a lot quicker. I give you as an example the approval of the reimbursement that FEMA made. It has been already 12 weeks or so that FEMA has approved the first one. It went to the state, and we have not received the money yet. The approval of the second one was approved probably about two or three weeks ago. That's over, a little bit over $8 million. I'm not too sure what the state portion of it is, but that has not, it was approved by federal government. It had, it was remanded to the state with the approval, and we have not received any money yet.
Commissioners, let me further elaborate. I'll give you the specifics on that because it does impact us over time. You know, we are, we haven't received the first dollar yet from any of the reimbursement for Hurricane Matthew, and--
And to give you the specifics of what, what kind of money we're talking about, as Yuri mentioned, that first one was $4.2 million. That was under debris. That was for the first 30-day period, I believe. The second was for protective measures, which was sheltering, et cetera. Now, this is under Matthew. That was a little over $1.2 million. And then the remaining debris, which Yuri mentioned as well, which we've already been approved for through FEMA, was an additional $8.3 million. That's $13.7 million that, you know, we have in our budget, as though we have it, but we've, we're continuing to wait for that reimbursement. So that's overall what we're speaking of. The $391,000 is another portion that's not part of that total that I just mentioned.
Commissioners, Zarnardi.
Oh, I mean, the more information I hear, the more upset I get. I mean, I realize we want to keep the good relationship with the state, but if that money's approved, I can't understand why they would be holding on to it. That's not right. So maybe, you know, we're all elected, and we're all, you know, held to a standard. We need to talk to our delegation and have them work on our behalf. That's my opinion. And I think if they've already acknowledged that it was their failure, why, why dance around it? Why not just say, well, you've already admitted that it's your fault? It doesn't really matter what they did wrong, or what, you know, or if it sat on someone's desk, or got thrown out, or got lost, or if it's in somebody's living room. I mean, we, we just, we need to demand it if that's our money.
Commissioner, I don't have a preference one way or another, and you're probably right in taking the two-prong approach. I was thinking more in terms of the future. We need to understand what went wrong, so if it was something that we can correct, we can do it for the future, but that will not solve what happened in the past. We've still got problems that need to be solved of what occurred in the past.
Thanks.
Any other comments? Pleasure of the board.
I move to go ahead and give the staff the ability to do items number one and two moving forward.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, and a second by Commissioner Zarnardi. Comments?
What, we need to be something, do something a little bit more forceful, I think, to try to push our, with our legislators, to find out what really happened and create some legislation or rules or something to prevent stuff like this from happening again, particularly if there is a means of going straight to FEMA and get reimbursement directly to FEMA. I mean, it concerns me, they get, they reimburse it to the state, and we're still waiting for it, when, again, it's, we're the ones where the rubber meets the road. I mean, this is where we need the money. So I'd like to see that we put something in there to, a letter to legislative delegation explaining this, saying we need their cooperation to push for a review and change in regulations if required, something like that.
I would agree with that. I think we need to have staff propose and put together a letter outlining the problems here, that we haven't been reimbursed for over a year, that this is money out of our pocket, and now we're facing another storm with similar costs involved, and explain the background, because I'm not sure that they even know about it, and we need to bring it to their attention. And then I will sign it, and we will forward it to our entire legislative delegation.
Chairman.
Yes.
Down here.
Mr. Knox.
I think that.
I heard a voice.
It may, it may help if the, if our office does a little bit of research on what the legal process was that got followed up here, and maybe propose some kind of solution that would go along with your letter, like a piece of legislation or change in the rules, whatever it may be.
I think that's wise counsel.
That will give them something to work with.
Wise counsel from a wise man.
I understand the delegation meeting's tomorrow, so, so I guess I, we could, well, we'll talk about that when we get into that.
Could you, could you put something together for Commissioner Barfield for tomorrow?
Well, we certainly can get a letter together by tomorrow. I'm not sure if we can have the rules and a new statute done by tomorrow, but we can do that as, you know, they'll be meeting in a proper process of what, six or seven months? All right, good. Commissioners, Zarnardi.
I have a quick question. Is there other entities that are, that are reimbursed directly? I mean, I'm imagining from FEMA, where they don't have to go through their state or another legislative body?
Not from my type of work. The debris collection is the grantee, the grantor is the state, and we're a sub-grantee. So we fall under the state by federal rules.
Moving on to five B.
I think we got a vote on the motion.
Oh, we didn't vote on it?
No.
Okay, sorry. Glad somebody's paying attention up here. Okay, we have a motion on the floor, and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Pass is five zero. Now move on to five B.
Commissioner Tobias. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I think we couldn't have had a better segue. I think five A leads to the necessity for more transparency in government, and that is exactly what five B seeks to do. A brief introduction as to where we were and how we got here. On February 10th, I sent a letter to the EDC asking for some simple information on such items as travel expenses and salaries. The EDC did not provide me with the information that I requested. I introduced a proposal to amend the county's grant agreement with the Economic Development Commission, the EDC, to bring more sunshine to how taxpayer money is being spent at August 22nd meeting. Commissioner Pritchett requested that the proposal be tabled for four weeks, so the EDC could have even more time to decide whether or not they wanted to be transparent. The commission agreed to that wise suggestion. The reason we're hearing it today is, A, that four weeks has transpired, and B, according to the county manager's office, this proposal must be heard today, because the grant renews automatically when the county sets its budget on the 26th. So again, to go over the brief proposal, there's no change to the disclosure requirement for information which is confidential under Florida statute, section 288.075. This amendment would only require basic disclosures such as travel expenses, lobbyist expenses, salaries and bonuses, advertising expenses, lists of projects, and expenses on sporting event tickets. The state has regulations set up. My proposal, and I'm not gonna, even though I'd be more than willing to answer, is far less stringent than what the state requires for state agencies. Commissioner Barfield made an excellent point, one that I did not foresee, about the numerous grants that the county provides as far as disclosure. I did not have a good answer at the time, so another good reason for the four-week break for me to do my homework. First of all, this grant is unique for a number of reasons, and here is the first one. This is the only grant that auto-renews. Of all our grants, let me repeat it again, this is the only grant that auto-renews. Most other grants are the secured mortgage assistant grants through HHS or pay-for-service. There is only one grant over $300,000, and that's a grant for the C1 re-diversion. It's a cost-sharing grant with St. John's River Water Management District for specific capital projects, and of course, it is fully and completely subject to public record. So I received, as I imagine your office did, your offices did, some suggestions from the Economic Development Commission, which is very unique. The grantee is making suggestions to the grantor as to how they would like to disclose money from the grantor, but I, the access to documents are documents that do not provide the same transparency and clarity that I requested. In fact, I received a half-page financial report that everyone already had access to for $1.4 million. It is a little scary when you look at our county budget. It's hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of pages in which our citizens have the ability to go through, and yet, $1.4 million is expended on less than half a page. My, my amendment would provide more transparency, and I would request that we would remove, that we would move forward with the amendment to the grant and cement that before the budget meeting on the 26th. And that's, I'd be more than willing to go into any more detail, but that is the gist of the continuance from the August 22nd meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Comments from the board? Mr. Barfield, you have the floor.
Well, this is again, the continuous attack on EDCs and everything else along, has anything to do with economic development. The amendments that the Economic Development Commission provided make something very, very important point that I think needs to come out. $1.4 million is not the entire amount that the EDC has as their revenue. They have sponsors, they have investors, they have people that put money into this. To make, so what they have proposed is basically, they're gonna provide all the detailed information on how they spent the $1.4 million grant, and I think that's appropriate. I know in my company, I have different government contracts and stuff, and different types of government contracts, and different other types of money. I don't have to tell anybody what I spent on another company, and I don't think that is appropriate. The government won't even require me to do that. So I think what we need to do, I think their amendment is fine, and I think, I, I believe it would, it would meet the requirements that are necessary. So I make a motion that we pass this grant agreement with amendment one from the Economic Development Commission's that they have provided.
We have a motion on the floor.
Can we go into discussion about?
Well, we can if we get a second.
Make a second for discussion.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Pritchett. Comments from the board. Mr. Tobias, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Wait a minute. Commissioner Pritchett has pressed a button.
Just a couple of comments, and I'm looking through the stuff that the EDC sent over. One, it would be important for me to go ahead and see that the county funds are being spent responsibly, and that's kind of outlined in the documentation we see. I do like the way they are trying to make it more accessible by the community, that they're gonna go ahead and put that on the EDC website to be able to find it easier. One thing that kind of got my attention, that they get a Florida Single Audit Act, and those are kind of tough audits that go through, and when you get internal controls audited, they really check through all those items. And just being in the past, getting to go and sit in their meetings before, the officer board and their boards of directors, they're volunteers, and they're pretty smart people, and they got CPAs and CFOs, and so I think they've got a lot of great oversight as far as responsibility in the community. And another thing that I have to say in the EDC's behalf is, is they take a small amount of money, which doesn't seem like a small amount, but compared to the bang on the buck and the return on investment, it's quite substantial. So I think it's working, and I think they're responsible, and as far as getting the transparency as far as the county funds, I'm probably comfortable with that also.
Commissioner Tobias.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've heard some scary words up here. First of all, there's attack. This could be nothing less than an attack. This is money that comes from taxpayers, hard-earned taxpayers, money that we've decided we were going to spend less on such programs as Meals on Wheels and give to an organization that fails to disclose basic information such as, how much money do the officers receive of taxpayer dollars? Do they spend any money on lobbyists? Do they receive any bonuses? Did they buy tickets to Super Bowl games? How much money did they spend on hotels at the Four Seasons in Seattle to attend a Blue Origin event? Taxpayers do not have access to this stuff. Commissioner spoke of as far as the EDC behalf. As commissioners, we are up here on the taxpayers' behalf, and I think it behooves the taxpayers to have access to know where their resources and how their resources are spent. I don't want to think. I want to actually have the numbers and make the decision that the people made to elect us, so we could decide whether or not empirically, instead of just thinking whether or not this money was used wisely. But understand, understand that if you vote for this, we will not have access to find out, again, if the EDC used taxpayer funds to buy fancy bottles of wine or rent sports cars for their investors. All of this stuff would be, is perfectly, A, acceptable right now, and B, not disclosed in their current financial report. And if you think as a commissioner that that is not shirking your duty to look out for every single precious taxpayer dollar, ones that we said we were gonna take away from Meals on Wheels, if you think that fancy bottles of wine, and Super Bowl tickets, and fancy hotel rooms are a better use of resources, then I encourage you to support the Ms. Weatherman's proposal, but if you believe your job is to look out for each and every taxpayer dollar and require that the money that we hand over is disclosed in as transparent of a manner as that we disclose every other dollar up here, then I encourage you to support my proposal, which again, which again, asks these very basic questions. Where do you travel? Do you pay lobbyists? How much do you get paid? What projects are you, what projects are you working on? Again, none of this deals with the disclosure of confidential information, and how much money do you spend on sporting tickets? Basic, basic questions to find out if you believe that we are getting the bang for the buck of $1.4 million. If you disagree with that statement, then I respect that. However, I would ask for your indulgence for more transparency. I don't know what harm. I have absolutely no idea what harm, and the EDC has not answered that very basic question, what harm to taxpayers would there be finding out how the taxpayer money is spent? It is that simple. It is that basic, and I ask for you to reject the proposal currently on the table and ultimately accept the proposal that I put forth four weeks ago. We gave the EDC four weeks, and they decided, no, this was too much transparency. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners, Zarnardi, you have the floor.
Okay, I'll try to just be short. I think we have to be really careful here, because while I agree with Commissioner Tobias' champion of transparency, thinking, I, this is still a private company that receives additional funding separate from the county's funding, so I think we have to be careful as a county commission, that we are not entitled to all of those records, although it would be nice, I mean, of course, to have all that. I think, you know, and whether or not you choose, or this commission chooses, you know, as we do our budgets annually, to do business in this manner, to do this as a grant, to do business with a private company for economic development, is a decision of this board. So we've sort of set ourselves up for this, in my opinion, because I don't think any more than I have the right, although I don't agree with some of the tax, cash incentives that commission, this commission and others in the past have granted to big corporations, we don't have public records access to their books either, and, and that falls under the same category as grants. While I think that it would be nice and it would be ideal, that's just not the structure of this grant agreement. And again, if this board desires to change that in the future... And again, if this board desires to change that in the future, I'm all ears, and I'm not opposed to changes in the future in regards to how we're granting the EDC these funds. But because this is a private company, you know, I won't agree that we have 100% complete access, we should have 100% complete access, because I don't, I wouldn't want the government looking into my private business if I applied for a grant. I would follow the terms of that, what they required of my financials. And maybe that's what you're asking for, perhaps.
You did.
Are those terms, and that's different. But I think because they do have such a large source of funding outside of what the county grants them, you know, I just don't agree with it. Does that make sense? I don't talk in circles sometimes, but there's a lot on here. And again, in a perfect world, we, it would be full disclosure, but I think that we have to be careful, because they are a private company. And if we, and if we change the terms of that grant later, that's, that's the way this commission will go, but, you know, that's not the way this commission has voted, so we're bound by the terms that we set up.
Mr. Barfield, you have the floor.
Yes, I find it ironic that Commissioner Tobias is talking about not feeding the elderly, since he's supported doing away with feeding the elderly on a community-based organization. But put all that aside, I believe the 1.4 million, the way this proposal is from the Economic Development Commission, again, it's the 1.4 million that we're interested in, not the rest. All those reports are available. You have the annual audits, you have oversight by commissioners and their appointees, there is a county commissioner on the executive committee, there is oversight in so many different ways. But again, it's the 1.4 million, it's not the rest. So my motion still stands, and I think we need to accept it with the amendment from
Question has been called. I would just like to weigh in briefly. I'm all in favor of full disclosure for the 1.4 million dollars of county money that they get. I'm convinced that we have full disclosure, we know through, I don't remember what, through the tax documents, we know what their top executives are paid. I don't support a witch hunt going after their records. We wouldn't do that if it was Harris Corporation. We just have some people that don't like this particular operation, so I would not support this. So I support going after information that isn't privy to the private sector. So the question has been called, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Barfield, second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Passes 4-1. Commissioner Tobias being the nay vote. Moving on to new business.
6A1 is a request for the Board of County Commissioners to consider a 90-day temporary waiver of permit fees for certain permits related to storm damage caused by Hurricane Irma. Those permits would include roof replacement, air conditioner equipment replacement, screen and pool enclosure replacement, replacement of carports, and a replacement of destroyed mobile homes during the storm event.
Let me add to that, that we are not, you know, by this, and we want to be very clear, and we will do that if the board approves it as well in public service announcements. The permits are still going to be required. What we're speaking about is only the fees that are associated with those permits. So you still need to get the permit. It actually impacts, you know, residents' insurance policies if they don't do it properly, repairs properly, have the proper inspections done, and county staff will continue doing that. We're just looking to try to assist them over the period by waiving the fees that are associated with repairs due to damage caused by the hurricane.
Pleasure to the board. Commissioner Nardi.
Can we include, fences isn't in there? I mean, is that assumed, but everything but fences is in there?
Fences are already precluded from needing, for the necessity of a permit based on our ordinance for 90 days.
Okay, all right.
So if anybody has a fence repair, they don't need a permit to do that.
Thanks.
I have a comment. The permits are still required. I think it's important for us to make that very, very clear to the public. Well, I really don't have any aversion to waiving the permit fees. I think it would be, I think we would achieve the same thing, and I'm throwing this out to the board, I'm just thinking out loud. If we cut the permit fees in half, I think that would send a message to the public that, yes, you have to get a permit, because I think it just gets confusing to the public when they see waiver and building fees, and then they start thinking, or thinking, or don't think, that the waiver includes the fact that we don't even have to get a permit. So I think we would be doing a service to the community in several ways. One, we would be informing them that they have to get a permit. Two, we would be cutting the fee by 50% or 75%. That's just my thoughts.
Commissioner Tobias.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the suggestion. Let me see if I understand it. We would be doing the public a service if we charged them for damage through no fault of their own because of a hurricane, instead of waiving that fee altogether? Can you explain to me a little bit better, because I don't, I don't, I don't understand?
Well, simply put, I already explained it once, because if we don't, the public's going to go out there thinking, and I've talked to staff about this, the public will just assume that because the fee is waived, that the permit requirement is waived. And we want to make sure the public understands. So make it 25%, make it $10. I'm not looking to punish anybody, Commissioner Tobias, I'm just suggesting that rather than create confusion, let's make it simple, that everybody understands that we understand that there was something that happened beyond their control, but at the same time, we want them to understand they still have a responsibility of getting a building permit.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So basically, you're insinuating that the public is not smart enough to understand?
No, sir, and don't put words in my mouth, that is not what I said at all. Did I say that? No, I did not. Thank you. Anyone else?
Commissioner Nardi.
I think the idea is to give these people relief, and I would support this. I mean, it says pretty clearly that it's a waiver of permitting fees in relation to hurricane damage. So, I mean, for someone to think they wouldn't need a permit, they're probably the kind of people that wouldn't get permits to begin with, if that's the case, and maybe that's the excuse that they would use. But for people who have a damaged, you know, commercial building or a damaged home, I don't see them trying to pull a fast one. I think any relief that we can help our residents is a good thing, so I'd be in support of waiving those fees for 90 days.
Staff, we just went through this a year ago. Is that not what happened? Because that's what I was told yesterday, that a lot of people just said, well, they thought they didn't have to get a permit, because they understood that the permits were waived.
Yes, Commissioner. Last year during Hurricane Matthew, the permit fees weren't waived. The storm events in 2004, where we had very widespread damage, and there was a lot of contractors coming in from out of state to help provide relief for that, and then at that time, there were a lot of, there was a lot of construction that was done that we could not document with a permit, or was not documented with a permit. And so what we find, and what happens in our world today, is, is people get their insurance bill, and they're looking for wind mitigation credits, and they come back to us and say they need to get a copy of their building permit, and we don't have that document to provide for their insurance company. And that's where it really becomes very important for them to receive the insurance credits that they have the permit document. So that's what we need to ensure that they achieve. With this storm, there was more damage done than what we saw in Matthew. We'll probably see some folks coming in from out of state and looking to do that work, and that's where we get, that's where the concern comes in.
Pleasure to the board. Commissioner Barfield.
Yeah, I think this is where we get out there and see if our social media and everything else that we had to put out awareness of it, I think we need to really step that up, and I'm sure we can do it based on what I've seen. But I do know, when you're using contractors, there are those contractors that are unscrupulous, local ones, but there are also ones who are licensed, especially with roof replacement, air conditioning, screen enclosures, replacement of carports, gosh, it sounds like everything I had done last storm. But all of these different things are, you're going to use licensed contractors, and they know, they know they're supposed to have a permit. If they don't, they'll be paying the price for it. So we run that risk anyway, because major influx of work, and that's just going to, you know, I do think, though, I just believe that we, this is the right thing to do, I really do.
Well, I like the idea from the fact that it's the right thing to do, and let's waive the fees, but as was just explained, we're going to have people that want their roof fixed, want their screen enclosure replaced, and they're going to have contractors say, I'll take care of the permit, or you don't need a permit. In either case, the permit doesn't get applied for, and then this person is spending the money and doesn't have any documentation. And then if they need documentation at a later date, that they replace the roof or they replace something, they don't have a permit. So we can't say, yes, you did, or no, you didn't. So that's, that's where I'm coming from. But I'm all for taking care of the public. If you think waiving the fees won't create any confusion, let's have it.
Commissioner Nardi.
I'll just, I'll just end with, you know, I believe that, I mean, we have to, at what point are homeowners responsible for getting their own permits, or making sure that their person repairing their roof has their permit? I mean, I would never pay somebody several thousand dollars to repair a roof without making sure all the permits were in place. I mean, you would hope that doesn't happen, but it's going to happen either way. So, I mean, I, with that, I'll just make the motion for the 90-day temporary waiver of permit fees related to Hurricane Irma.
We have a motion on the floor to waive the fees by Commissioner Nardi, we have a second by Commissioner Pritchett. Any other conversation? All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 6-2.
Thank you, commissioners. This is for restoration of our engineered dunes in the mid-reach along Satellite in Harbor Beach, and in the south beaches from south of the town of Melbourne Beach down to just north of Sebastian Inlet. The sand along these beaches in our restored emergency berms in the dunes, they did a spectacular job of providing storm protection. We had very few structural damages out there to crossovers, and if you just compare that to the damages that we see a few miles inland along the western shore of the Indian River Lagoon, all the dock damage, a much less wind field, less storm surge, less wave environment, but much higher damages. And the reason for that comparison is this very healthy sand beach and dune that we've maintained along our beaches. So this agenda item is looking for authorization to proceed with replacing the sand that was lost due to Irma, and additionally, some of the losses in the mid-reach that were experienced during Matthew. We'd like, we've given you two options if you want us to proceed. One is to negotiate directly with the previous low-bid contractor to restore these emergency dunes. JP Donovan has been the low bidder, or amongst the low bids, multiple times for this work. He has performed the scale of restoration that's needed successfully in the timeframe that we have, trying to prepare before next year's hurricane season. And so we know he's capable. If you don't want to do that as a negotiated change order, we would ask for permission to shorten the bid period to two weeks to allow us to get this work underway as soon as possible. There are two reasons to push this forward quickly. One is, of course, that there, although there was enough sand out there to protect all of that infrastructure from this event, we don't know what's right around the corner, we don't know what the impacts of Maria is going to be, or other storms, or winter storms. And so the sooner we can get this done, the more protection we're providing to the folks along the beaches there, and the road and utility infrastructure that's out there. The other reason is that there's going to be a lot of demand for the sand resources that we need to implement this project, and the borrow pits that are producing this material, there's a lot of processing that goes into producing the quality of sand that we want for our beaches, especially being the world-class turtle nesting beaches that we have, and that, that demands a certain quality of sand that you don't just dig out of the ground, you've got to process it. And so in order to give the pits the maximum amount of time to produce this material, we need to get out there first before our neighboring communities are competing for that same sand. We, to do a project of this scale, we will probably need to use borrow pits in multiple counties around us, as far south as Fort Pierce, and so those neighboring communities that also suffer will be also looking to these same resources. So those are the two choices, either negotiate a change order with our existing contractor, or shorten the bid period, and then we ask that you authorize the county manager or commission chairman to execute all the necessary contracts to implement the work and authorize associated budget change requests. The funding would come from the tourist development tax beach improvement fund. The local cost after FEMA and DEM reimbursement would be $1,051,000 approximately. The TDC has emergency reserves of $1 million for this kind of work, and any remaining balance there can be covered by excess collections that have come in already this, this year.
Commissioner Pritchett.
Thank you for allowing me to ask you a whole bunch of questions yesterday. I'm probably leaning more towards using Mr. Donovan. You said that he's done a really good job, and he's already in the flow, and you also had mentioned that due to him not having then to put in a formal bid, it would save him money, so you think you could probably even negotiate a lower price than we already have him for. And what caught my attention when you were requesting this, is that you said that time is of a great value to us. So that's, that's probably going to be the way I'm going to lean today in a vote, is to go ahead and request that we go with Mr. Donovan and allow them to negotiate a better rate than we're currently using him for right now, because his costs are lower.
Commissioner Tobias, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two questions, Ms. Parker. Number one, if we were to wait the two weeks, what are the potential impacts? I know if we can look out to weather that is two weeks out, and do you see anything on the horizon that could potentially impact? And two, how big is this total project? If $1,051,000 is our portion of the project, how big is the total project?
So we know there's a lineup of events out there in the ocean, I have, and we often experience winter storms as well, once we, you know, winter nor'easters, once we get through the summer tropical storm season. So the beaches are very vulnerable right now. We have 12-to-14-foot cliffs in the dune closer than is comfortable for many structures out there. We will experience the highest high tides of the year, again, next week, and then in October and November are the three highest high tides of the year. And so at those times, the water elevation just of the ocean is high enough that it's eating away at the bottom eating away at the bottom of those 12-to-foot, 14-foot cliffs in the dune. And if you add a storm swell or a wave event on top of that, you can have major collapses underneath people's foundations. Your second question, the size of the contract, we're talking about $8.4 million worth of work. That includes the permitting, the design work, the construction oversight, replacement of sea oats, environmental, the sea turtle monitoring. And so the construction contract would be on the order of $7 million or slightly less.
Mr. Chair, a couple follow-ups?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The two weeks, help me, how quickly could Mr. Donovan start? Could this be completed within that two-week period in order to protect us from those storms? Or either way, whether we gave a no-bid contract of roughly $8 million or $7 million, either way, would that have an impact? And number two, how, I know you can't give me an exact number, but if we were to put out a project of this magnitude, seven or eight million dollars, how many bids would you expect to receive?
I'm going to, I'm going to let Mike McGary, our beach management coordinator, beaches, boating and waterways program manager, respond to some of those more detailed questions.
I didn't check our past bid records recently, but typically there would be on the order of four or five bids. And typically, two contractors have been most competitive historically. And our historic prices, what we've actually paid, has ranged from $23.50 to up to $49 a cubic yard when we've gone out to bid. So we've paid as much as $49 a cubic yard. And our current contract is for $28.80 a cubic yard. So, yeah, that's over the last 17 years. So after storm events, the bid prices are typically higher because there's more demand.
Thank you. Can you answer the other one? If we were to give a no-bid contract to JP Donovan Construction?
Yeah. The contractor could not be on the beach within two weeks. That's impractical. But what would happen is the sand production, which is the critical link in the project, the sand production could begin immediately. But the construction would not begin within the next few weeks on the beach.
So if I understand this correctly, nothing tangible will be happening to the dunes. Obviously, things will be leading up to that, but nothing tangible can be done whether we do the, again, no-bid, $7 to $8 million contract, or we truncate the bid process to two weeks. Is that a, is that a fair assessment?
Right. Either way, it will be multiple weeks before we see heavy equipment out there on the beaches. It will be several weeks further if we wait for a bidding process. And the other consideration is that the sooner we have a contractor out there, if we do have additional storm losses, we know specifically which properties are most vulnerable. We could, instead of working in order, we could get to those sites ahead of schedule if we needed to.
Thank you. One final question. And I might understand that this bid is slightly more than 20% higher than the historic low bids that we've had in the past.
No. If you took an average of historic low bids, it would not be near 20% lower. There was, there was one bid that was $23.50, and so I don't.
This is 28.80? And I'm doing the math in my head, which is always a dangerous proposition, but I think you're going to find it's right on the magnitude of 20%, give or take 1%.
That was one, that was the lowest low of several bids. We've had other bids that came in at $27.50 and some as high as 49. So it's of the lowest, it's of the lowest low. And as Virginia pointed out, the sand specifications, we've increased them, improved them over the last several years after public input and consulting with the agencies to more closely match the native beach material. So that's increased the cost of sand production of, yeah, for our current projects.
Sorry, and I'm not a, I'm not a environmental expert. So the sand is the same color as the current sand? Is that the argument for that potential 20% matching? I'm sorry.
No, it's more, it's more relevant to grain size and fine sediment content to meet environmental permit requirements.
So another follow-up, sorry. So we're concerned, is it us that is concerned? Or would it be the state that would be concerned with the size of the grains of sand?
We are concerned. The state is concerned. And we've got immense public input that the public is concerned. So our office has worked very hard over the years to set a very stringent sand standard, both to meet the Environmental Permit Agency requirements and also results we've seen in the past to assure good turtle nesting.
Thank you. One last question. So if I was to public record, request your office, I would see a plethora of communication from constituents that were concerned about the size of the individual grain of sand? And if so, how many? I've not gotten one in my office, is the question.
Yes, we, there are a number of them. It also comes up in regular meetings at the Archie Carr National Wildlife Working Group. The Surf Rider Foundation has been especially concerned and as an organization has worked with us to improve that grain size. What we've found is that if we don't do this extra wash to remove the majority of the fine, the very finest-sized grains, the material tends to compact on the beach. And it becomes too compact for turtle nesting. We are required, after we place sand on the beach, to do compaction testing. And if the beach is too compact or the dune is too compact, then we have to till to fluff it up. And so those tilling costs, you have off the top of your, it is not inexpensive to till 20 miles of beach and dune. And so it is, it is a better quality product and less costly to get the right material on the beach up front than to go with a looser sand specification.
And that's what the $23 per cubic, I'm sorry, I just got the $23. I don't know how much sand I get for $23, but that's.
A cubic yard.
A cubic yard. That's the wrong size, that's the wrong size of sand, the $23 bid that we got. I don't know how long, I haven't seen that, this is all news to me. Was that the wrong-sized sand or is that the right-sized sand?
That met the minimum state requirements at that time, but it was less desirable sand and had, it was more prone to compaction as Virginia suggested.
But again, again, that meets all state, the $23 bid that we got would have met state, would have met state standards.
It met the state standards, it did not meet the community standards.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Pritchett, you have the floor.
If we want to go out for bid, I don't mind doing that because it's a large thing and it's a lot of companies. But I really think in the out, the long term, it's going to cost us more to do it at this point. Sand fascinates me. It's a very hot commodity during these times because everybody's after it. I know some people at the north end of the district, that's what they do for a living, and they'll just take trucks and trucks full of sand out to the beaches and put them in there. And something fascinating, Commissioner Tobias, gosh, back before I was in all this and we had the kids at the beach, Cocoa Beach one time had put the wrong sand on their beach. It was like a dark black sand. Everybody's feet were blistered. And I know we're talking about the turtles too, but man, you put the wrong stuff out there and we're going to lose children's feet. I just, we haven't done it since back then, but I mean, it was terrible. We quit going to Cocoa Beach for the whole rest of the summer. So I do, I do understand the sand, why we need it and getting it out there. So I, it's if, you know, if we end up wanting to go out for bids, I don't have a problem with it because my initial instinct is to always do that on these types of things for companies. But I really think in the long run, it's going to be less benefit for our county to do that. And it's probably going to be a little more costly because I have a feeling as these are sought-after commodities right now, that the prices aren't going to come in at $23 a square yard. I think they're going to be charging a little bit more for their sand because it's high in demand.
Commissioner Barfield?
Yeah, I can't believe we're talking this long about sand. I mean, my first meeting, we talked, got this long about dirt, but that's okay. My concern here, if I understand this right, if we go ahead and negotiate directly with this, with this contractor now, we already have terms and conditions already, all of that's already under contract. This would just be a change order. The other thing is this mobilization, we wouldn't have to mobilize twice, correct? We could do mobilization with, you're going to bring in Irma damage, do we save money from mobilization?
There's no one out there right now, so we're going to mobilize regardless.
Okay. What about production of the sand? That's, when you're, if I understand, production of the sand is where you are actually digging the sand or finding the sand, and that has to start early.
That is the weak link in all this. That's where we need the most time, sand production, yes.
And we could do that as soon as we, as soon as we have the contract in place.
Execute a change order, yes.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm fine with, I'm fine with doing a change order. As long as we can negotiate the price at no more than what they are right now. And if not, then I think it needs to go, has to go out for bid.
I second that.
On that note, one, Commissioner, one quick question?
Go ahead.
How big is the current, Commissioner Barfield mentioned the, it's a change order on a current contract. How large is that current contract? Is this a change order that's a small fraction of the current? And I should never ask a question, I have no idea, but how big is the current one?
It's on the order of $10 million. I don't have the exact number here with me, but the existing contract is on the order of $10 million.
So, you know, I, for fun, I build houses, and a change order is to add an extra candlelight or an extra fan or something like that. This change order is to build another house of the same size. Is that, if they have a $10 million contract, and this is for roughly $8 million, or would it be $7 million?
About $7 million.
About $7 million. So this change order is 70% of the original one. Is that a fair assessment?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioners Nardi?
I think it's a little insane that we talked about sand for as long as we do, but I guess you learn something new in every meeting. But I am, you know, I think that it's hard to predict what those bids will come in with. And I don't even have an issue necessarily with the quality of sand as far as helping, you know, the sea turtles and preventing impaction and that sort of thing, if it's environmentally the smart thing to do to prevent quicker erosion. But I'm not comfortable not going out to bid on this. I think that, you know, we can assume that everybody's going to be vying for sand, you know, and we want to get in when the price is right, but that's, that's sort of speculation, I think, at this point, because there are no more storms that are hitting the East Coast at the moment. We think something may be coming, but we're going to be doing this the next couple of months. So, I mean, I would be more comfortable going out to bid.
I would say that I'm also opposed to just handing over money without a bid process, but as Commissioner Barfield suggested, if we can lock this guy in at a current price, then I think we would be way ahead of the game. Because having gone through the hurricanes in '04 and having been in business then, I know that everything that was in the commodities was more expensive. Paint for cars was more expensive. Shingles were more expensive. Shingles, I think before the storm, you could get shingles installed on your roof for about 14 bucks a square yard and, or square foot. And I think probably three weeks after the hurricane, it was all the way up to 28, and I think it topped out at about $34 a square. So I'm assuming the same is probably going to happen to the commodity of sand. And if we have to stand in line to get sand, is there enough sand to go around at any price? Or do we sit there and wait for it to show up? That's my question. Is there plenty of sand out there? If we, in other words, if we don't, if we don't put our order in for XYZ amount of sand for three weeks or three months, is the price likely to change?
The price is likely to go up with competition, but, and there is, there is not an unlimited supply of upland sand. There may not be enough once adjacent communities start to compete.
So that means it's going to go up even faster.
Or if there is enough, it'll require 24-hour production, which makes the price go up. So it, it's not a readily available product.
And that we don't have another storm out there today that might affect us, I don't think that matters in the scheme of things. Hopefully, we don't have any. If we do, that magnifies the problem. But let's assume we don't have any more storms coming. We still have an awful lot of counties to compete with for sand. I mean, the entire east and west coast of Florida is going to be competing for sand. I don't know if they're all the same. Different areas may have different sand. I don't know. But competition increases price. That's just, I mean, you know, it's the law of supply and demand.
Right. We would be in competition with Indian River County, St. Lucie County, maybe Martin County. They would be the same communities going after the sand resources.
What about on the west coast?
They probably have closer supplies, other supplies.
Okay. So Commissioners Nardi has something else to add?
I would just say that I think it's, I think it's, it's two weeks. I mean, if this price of sand, I mean, is going to change that much in two weeks, and I'm not going to base my decision on failing to go out for a bid that's a $7 million project based on a two-week timeframe of what may or may not be, trying to base it on storms that happened over 13 years ago. So again, I'll just reiterate, I don't think 14 days is, 14 days, I mean, I think I'd rather take the risk of going out to bid and possibly coming in cheaper. I mean, we might come in cheaper than what we're agreeing to pay if we go ahead and continue this contract, so.
It's a business decision. You roll the dice.
It's $7 million.
Well, it's not, it's not $7 million total. What you're rolling the dice on is if it's going to be $9 million, it costs you $2 million to drag your feet. If you can get in for $5 million, then you roll the dice and you'd save $2 million, so.
And I would agree with you if that number was a realistic number. I don't think that that's a realistic number.
So we don't know. That's, that's. Welcome to the business world. Mr. Barfield?
Just to point out that this other contract was, low-bid contractor was prior to Irma. Post Irma, as we've seen everything else go up, gas prices, everything go up, there's no gouging, but seems like a lot of stuff is going up. And so, you know, sometimes it's better to look at going with what we know we have instead of taking a risk when we see everything else around us going up in price. So I'm good either way. You know, it's, it really, it's okay, but I'm just pointing that out from a business standpoint.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I'm just going to reiterate that. We got $28 per square, per square cubic yard, let me get the cubic yard. And that's when it was in low demand. And I do know that they're already getting bids in for sand. They're gearing up for it. So it's, it's a, it's a limited commodity and it's already moving. So I, you know, again, I'll vote with the board with whatever comes out, but I would, well, we have a motion on the table right now, so I'm probably going to vote on that one because I think that this is going to be cheaper for our county to do this and quicker.
Any other comments? We have a motion by Commissioner Barfield. Do we have a second? Commissioner Pritchett? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Passes 3-2. They vote to Commissioner Tobias and Commissioner Nardi. Yes, 6B, one. The only one we have. In this, I will remind the board, requires a supermajority vote.
Good morning, Commissioners. Is this working? Oh, now it's working. So this is a lease agreement for Space Coast Full Throttle Speedway. They have a go-kart compound at one of our parks, and they, in the past, have been in a recreation agreement, recreation partner agreement. But because they have exclusive use at Space Coast, we're asking that it be a lease agreement.
Pleasure, the board.
I would move to approve it. I know from some work that the parks did that they made sure that he had correct liability. It is serving the community. There's no high demand for the property otherwise right now. And he's agreed to make payments on the lease also. So it's actually better than we, better positioned than what we're in prior to this agreement. So I would make a motion to approve this.
Commissioner Tobias.
Thank you. And can you run over the lease terms very briefly? And is this similar to other leases that we may have through the counties? So those are the two questions.
So the lease term is for three years and with an option of one, two-year renewal. And that is similar to other lease agreements that we have with senior centers, for example. So this is standard.
Sorry, and the fee paid, the lease fee paid?
He's paying $100 a month.
And finally, what responsibility would the county have for maintenance of that? Or any type of, you know, trash pickup, anything like that?
None. Under the terms of the agreement, they are responsible, solely responsible for the leased area. So they are responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of that area. There's a concession stand in there. There's a tower in there. There is some grass that they maintain. So the county has no, no responsibility. There's a $1 million general liability insurance policy that they will provide the county for 365 days a year, and then an additional $4 million general liability that will be in force on event days.
Any other comments? Thoughts? Do we have, oh, you made a motion? Okay. Commissioner Pritchett made a motion to approve this resolution. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Barfield. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Moving on to 6E1.
Commissioners, this item is the board's consideration for the legislative delegation and items that were put together by staff based upon input that we received from either the board, board members, directors. And we had planned for this to go on a zoning meeting, but obviously that got bumped. And so the legislative delegation is meeting tomorrow. What we're really looking for here is the board's consideration and board discussion on particular items that you would like Commissioner Barfield to bring forth to the delegation tomorrow. He has very limited time to do that, so we'd like to see the, we're hoping to hear board discussion on the most important priorities that you as a group would like to bring forward. And then, of course, if there are any particular items that individual commissioners do not want to support, if we could know that too so that if the board chooses to make a motion on presenting this package to the board, we can have on the record, you know, who supported what items and which ones you did not support.
Mr. Tobias.
Where's that from last time? It was from last time. We're glad to begin with, I had some that, that I was opposed to. I had some further additions to there, but whether you want me to bat leadoff or clean up, I'm, you're.
The other floor.
Okay. I'll first of all go with the ones that I would oppose. So home rule, I would have opposition to any legislation, action that dilutes or reduces home rule. I certainly do not mind having my books open up by the state. I would oppose legislation that accedes funding for Brevard County environmentally endangered lands for conservation land acquisition. We have bonds they're running, and I don't believe that it would make any sense for us to continue to go out there and purchase land and then turn around and have no way to manage those lands. I would oppose the tourist development legislation, which would expand the legal use of tourist development tax. I don't know why in the world we would, we would be against flexibility. There are some other ones, those are just the highlights. I have some other fun ones here. We're home to Eastern Florida State College. So I would support the repeal of laws and policies extending in-state tuition benefits to undocumented immigrants. I would, since unions cause concern, I would support the repeal of paycheck protection. This is where the state collects union dues and then remits them back to the unions. I would support efforts to transition FRS from defined benefit to defined contribution as many of the individuals who are currently county employees are on FRS. So we need to make sure their benefits are there when they decide to retire. That is a way to shore that up. And I would support the prohibition when it comes to community redevelopment agencies. As other county commissioners have pointed out, once they're created, they never go away. There certainly is and has been legislation in the past that is dealing with these organizations. So again, I named some of the other ones that I would be in opposition to us supporting, and some additional, additional ones for food for thought.
Why don't we just go down the line? Commissioner Barfield?
Well, first, I just want to point out, I have three minutes, so. So I'm just telling you, I don't think I can get all of these in. I'd recommend that we, we come up with three, three top items, and then the rest, the chairman write a letter with the ones we want to the Brevard delegation. So.
That's a good idea. Well, you know, what we could do is just do a number, number, number them and then hand them in to us at the end of the meeting. What's your top, what's your number one? What's your number two? One to 10, or one to five? Any thoughts on that?
I mean, I would do that, but I use my agenda electronically. I don't have a printed version of that. I mean, I can, I don't mind doing that. I think, I think we could easily discuss what's most important to us. That can be a discussion rather than going through each one.
Need to point out also that the EOC is going to be a separate item that Ms. Prosser's going to do. So we don't have to address that one here.
So what if we just go through and tell you what our most important one is individually and say really fair on that?
You want to jot it down as we do it? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think we've all discussed already today. It sounds like we've all been in support of dealing with the FEMA reimbursement as far as coming up with some sort of legislation that would potentially take the state out of that. It seemed like we were all in favor of that, and that is something that could remit us quite a bit of resources in the future in much more expedient of a nature. So I think that that would have some tangible benefits, and I think it's something that I certainly would support. It sounds like other commissioners would. It's not on this, to the best of my knowledge.
And that's a big dollar amount. Maybe, you know, if they're opposed to that, maybe another option would be that they have to turn around those monies quicker, like they have 30 days to remit, you know, and if they don't remit, charging interest or doing something different. But I highly doubt the state would pay us interest or penalties, but maybe if that's the solution, if we have to keep the state in the mix.
Well, we may want to do it in a way that we can, legislative legislators to look at the current process, evaluate the current process as it is now, and identify and identify a better way of doing this, where we get our funding faster, such as direct to FEMA or faster paying within the organization of the EM. So, something like that.
And if we want to get really adventurous, we could even discuss or at least mention that the length of time the appeals process takes.
Yeah.
Because that can take years to get reimbursement with that.
And, and secondly, Mr. Chairman, I'm just looking at, I'm just looking at items that I think that we've all been on the same page on. And the first, home rule one, which is support amendment chapter 2001. This was dealing with the Melbourne Tillman Water Control District. It was a 3-0 vote, and then the four, the chair here had a 5-0 vote. So I think we all come together on, uniformly on the first one, which is the support to the amendment of chapter 2001. So those would be my suggestions, knowing that we all agree on them, Mr. Chairman.
Works for me. I would like to weigh in with the Indian River Lagoon restoration and stormwater treatment. Support initiatives that reduce pollution sources. Remove legacy loading and restore critical ecosystem functions. That would be my number one.
Mine would probably be under the infrastructure with the new bridge that we need to have built across the Nasa Causeway. This probably won't mean any funding will have to be transferred this time, but I think it's important that we keep it out there and let them know it's a priority because eventually we're going to need some help. If we, that bridge shuts down, I think it's 2019 is when they're no longer going to be able to use it, and that means the space business is going to.
Which bridge are you talking about?
The Nasa Causeway.
Okay, is that the one that they're replacing?
Yes, but I.
That the federal?
We're still going to need funding in a few years. So I, we have the primary down for the, the bids to go out for the, sorry, Marcia's got a lot of this for me, but to the TPO, there's, the initial part of it's already done, but we're going to need a big hump coming down the road.
Okay, so this is one that was funded by the state, but actually the federal government's funding the money to the state to.
Hopefully.
Yeah. Okay.
But we are going to need state participation.
I believe the design build on that was like 30% funded, and I believe it needs in the area of $140 million total. So there's some of, some of that would be state dollars, and the feds would be putting in the rest of that.
Well, I, I still oppose the legislative act, any action that takes away our home rule.
Amen.
And that's, I think that's, and as you were talking about oversight, CR records, that's all fine. But I'm talking about us making decisions on our home, at the, at the local level.
Aye. We have a member of the delegation that sponsored a piece of legislation at Tallahassee that went directly contrary to this. And what I'm afraid of is that if we were to do something like that and then turn around and ask for three or four other things, that may not work extremely favorably for the delegation to go up there and, you know, support three things and then actively work against the other one. If that's a statement that, that this board elects to take, that's one thing. But as far as our delegation going up there and working contrarily to the way they have in the past, because, you know, you're the individual that has to get up there and make these.
For three minutes.
For three minutes, you know. I, I think that that would be a very hard ask on your, on your part.
Okay, when I start out, I could just say something. We fully support home rule, you know, and just leave it at that.
You know what you could do? You know those radio ads? You could tape what you want to say and then just speed it up 10 times.
Yeah, I've already practiced. It still doesn't work.
Or maybe an option would be, you know, I think the legislator's intent was not to have a county government come in and put ridiculous rules and regulations and very strict requirements on businesses and otherwise. Obviously, that was the reason. I don't believe it was that he didn't want us to have any authority over our backyard. So, you know, do you get into that lengthy discussion when you have three minutes? I would say just keep it off the list.
Or please consider home rule, any legislation actions you take.
I think it's a sore subject.
I agree with that. I'm, I'm big on home rule. This is, just like we.
If I believed that it was a threat, then I would, I would say yes. You know what I mean? I would say, put it on our list.
I think, I think that it's being talked about makes it a threat. It's just.
I don't think it is.
Okay, any others? I mean, they're all worthwhile, but you have three minutes.
Well, the Indian River Lagoon, the support Senator Mayfield's push for the matching funds for.
Recurring funds, yes.
Septic tank to sewer. So, look at that.
So, well.
Mr. Chairman, I think that if we have a member of our delegation that is actually pushing for something, and we can lend local support to her.
That's what I'm thinking.
I think that that would be a very, that would be a way to curry favor with these, with these votes.
Yeah, because she's in favor of it doesn't mean that we shouldn't mention it. We, I think we should to reinforce and support her.
I agree.
If I, my Commissioners, if I can summarize what I think I've heard you say, or where you're going. Relative to FEMA, perhaps by rule requesting that we get them to improve their reimbursement timetable, you know, with a definitive rule of how quickly they're going to, once they receive funds, they have to give it back to local government. That would be your first one. The Melbourne Tillman would be second. You Lagoon Restoration through Septic Sewer Conversion, Space Coast, Space Transportation Infrastructure, those were the first four. And then I wasn't sure if you went on the fifth one being home rule or not.
I support home rule.
I like Commissioner Tobias. I'm just piping in because I wasn't sure if we were using our lights because we're just kind of having a conversation. But I like Commissioner Tobias. I don't know that you'd be able to abolish our, the existing CRAs, but I like the, you know, prohibition of the creation of new ones. And I think it's such a huge issue across the whole state right now. I think, you know, if we, if we showed our support to say, hey, you know.
Well, I, yeah, I don't.
Because I don't, I don't.
We're already going there. We have, how many agreements do we have signed already, Frank?
Well, we hit that stumbling block in September thanks to the hurricane. We were supposed to have the first couple done this, you know, a couple of weeks ago. So we are in process with, with at least four or five that we're anticipating coming back soon.
So I think we've made pretty good headway on a level.
We've made some progress on the existing ones we have, but this is about not creating any even further.
Well, the agreement is that, and the understanding that I'm trying to get across to them and us is that going forward, future commissions will be able to say yes or no, but we need to have stipulations that make sense, that will shut them down, and that's the key. You got to have, they have to go away. They can't just keep going and going like the Energizer Bunny. They have to go away. And I think we can do that, and we can, we can establish that. If, if you think we can have some influence in the state, yeah, let's do it. But again, we only have three minutes, and I think we've already done a lot on that front.
So let me get this right. We're doing FEMA, Indian River Lagoon, which was.
Septic sewer.
That's actually a separate one.
Okay, so what is the, sorry, what is the?
Indian River Lagoon is supporting initiatives to reduce pollution sources, but what I would like to do is say encouraging priority given to those projects which can provide matching funds.
Yeah.
State level.
Yeah, I like that. And, and just for the board's clarification, the reason I really like that is because last year, when we were out educating the public about these programs and the funding for the tax and the. and the funding for the tax, and if people wanted to vote for the tax or not vote for the tax, one of the questions that often came up was, well, are we going to be eligible for matching funds? And I spent an awful lot of time on the phone with our delegation, the governor himself and his aides, and I was assured, and at the federal level as well, I might add, that we were assured, I was assured, that we would get matching funds. And after it was passed, we got no matching funds, because the attitude turned 180 degrees. Well, you guys are already taking care of yourself, so let's produce funding for-
We didn't get any funding at all, across the state.
Yeah, right. But they, we were the, we were the champions, that we went out on the, out on the limb and did it, and, and passed these taxes. And then we didn't get a pat on the back, we didn't get any funding, we got nothing. So matching funds went away.
So, so Mr. Chair, so your thought is, since the governor has apparently switched his opinion on this, I don't know, I haven't spoken to him on this, and our delegation has switched from offering to provide matching funds, it's your belief that now, in the three minutes provided to Commissioner Barfield to make his case, that all of a sudden we can switch the mindset?
Well, that was Mr. Barfield's suggestion, and I, I support it. So I asked him the question.
Well, I'm sorry, you're the one speaking with, with, with the governor and, you know, his aides and all that good nonsense. My-
I just think it's important that we reiterate the fact that we're, we're the county that stepped up to, to support our backyard, and we were promised that we would get help. And it would be nice in the future if they would consider giving us that help.
Okay. I, I wasn't party to any of that stuff. My, my suggestion, and this is more forest than trees, is that we lend as much support to our delegation for things that we mutually agree upon. I think that if we go up there and we say that I disagree with your opinion on X, Y, or Z, which is A-OK, to disagree with their opinions on anything. But I think that we will find much more success with the suggestions that we make if they meet the criteria or the philosophy that the delegation has. While Commissioner Barfield only has three minutes, I've been a part of these delegation meetings. They are long, and the delegation is sitting up here for hours and hours and hours with people asking for things that are many times outside the control of the delegation up here. I think we would be unique if we went up there and, and we said, we're here to support you on items that benefit both you and us. And that is why I put down, you know, the, my suggestion on the Melbourne Tillman. This is something that, that will benefit both of us, FEMA. That is something that I imagine will meet there. I think if our delegation knew that that was the case, they would be out there fighting, fighting for us. And what other, whatever other ones that are, or, and Senator Mayfield, the fact that she's already identified this, I think that it would be very, the, the delegation would, would have to do a double take, that we weren't asking for anything that would cost them in any, either political or financial capital. If, if we were there just to support them, that would be a unique tact and make Commissioner Barfield's three minutes that much more meaningful.
Well, I agree. I think it would be more productive if you're asking them for what they already want. So if we can get the, the Septic Sewer from Senator Mayfield, that's a big plus for the Indian River. We can actually look for Indian River support on a one-on-one basis when we talk with them. Any other comments?
Let me get through it one more time, what he's going to speak on.
She wants to hear one more time what you're going to speak on, what it's boiled down to.
FEMA, IRL with the matching funds, Septic Sewer Conversion, and Melbourne Tillman.
I still think we need to bring up the bridge. It's not going to cost anything right now, but as Commissioner Tobias is saying, we need to have them really thinking about and be in favor of this down the road.
What, I think what we need to do is, this all needs to be written up in a formal document sent from the chairman, of these items are the highest priority. And then I think that's the best place to do it, because then that gets on their radar. When it goes, when they go up there, they'll send back for more information to be pushing us through. We need to keep it from there.
Just as a female, I've, I've learned that the more I nag about things, the more attention it gets. Yeah.
It works for males, too.
So, so just on, on that, I mean, I, this is going to be expensive in a few years. I, I think we need to start like, you know, really saying, you know, that bridge is important to our economy, bridge is important to our economy, just so that we have everybody in position and on how important it is.
Might be a good idea to put it on their radar.
See, it's working on you right now.
That's because I have to sit next to it.
Yeah.
See what I can do.
All righty.
Three minutes.
Good luck with that.
Yeah. I got that drawl. I feel it's kind of slow.
Especially when you throw in those yalls. Because Commissioner Smith won't be here.
I'll do everything.
All righty, where are we?
Are you going to take any formal action in terms of approving this as a package by the board?
Well, we can. We can, if Mr. Barfield wants to put it in terms of the issues.
I, I guess I'm just asking for us, in terms of sharing this moving forward, should we, if the, because we really don't have board approval for this being, this was what staff put together-
Right.
At this point.
For me, I'd be sticking to the five you picked and wouldn't worry about the rest of them, because you can dilute the five you have if you, if you had everything to it.
Yeah, I would just put this in, in the form of a document that we can talk about or vote on tonight. And then we can, because, well, we're not talking about the topics. We're not talking about the details.
Okay.
Mr. Vate, I'm sorry, I missed that.
If those were the only five items, that would be fine. We're just looking, as we give anything to lobbyists, et cetera, relative to what the board's prioritizing moving forward, we would share that with them as well. There are some items there that are federal as well as state. That's why I was looking for the overall document to say something that was, excuse me, board approved.
What are you thinking?
I think this document, I think we need to spend a little bit more time on it and come back to us, to, not, not tonight, on this document. I think we need to come back in the next regular board meeting. Be plenty of time to do that.
That would be fine.
I agree. I was just thinking about you going forward tomorrow morning. You're good?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes.
There was one modification that was sent out yesterday on the proposed calendar changing from November 6th, because it was an election day, that board meeting to November 13th. That was the one change I want to make sure Commissioners were familiar with.
I'll make a motion. We approve the 2018 Board County Commissioner meeting schedule.
We have a motion by Commissioner Barfield, second by Commissioner Pritchett, to approve the County Commission Board Meeting for 2018. Anyone wish to vote no? Pass this 5-0. 6F1.
I do, thank you, sir. I just brought this to our attention with, with something I think that would be beneficial for us to have into place. Not that I think that it would be a problem with anybody on the board, but sitting in a last position, there was opportunity for a few problems that, that arose during a meeting. And we had this in place, and we were able to ask them to take it outside. So I asked the county if we had anything in place, and they said, no, not at this time. So I, I just brought this forward. I thought it'd be good to protect our meetings. We, we don't want to have campaigning going on while we're trying to conduct public business. I, I just thought it was a good rule to put in place. I was actually surprised the county didn't already have something in place.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Pritchett, for, for, for bringing this up. I had a couple of questions on this one. Can you help me with a necessity for this? Are you aware of any actions that, I know you mentioned before, is that at the city, or is that before at the county? I'm not aware of either one, but either one would be valid.
Sir, there was a lady running for office, and when she was running, there was a hate group out that actually had shirts that said stop her, and there was fake websites up, and they kept showing up to our meetings with signs and T-shirts. And we told them they couldn't bring it in. They came to be on television. And so it, it would have been distracting to the meeting. So it's something that had protected us at a governing board level, of just people coming in and just using the dais for these things. The heats can get turned up during political times. I know we've learned that drastically when we were running for, for seats. So I, I just thought it would be best to protect our meetings so that we're not having to deal with it.
Thank you. Now, I haven't done this, but, but other Commissioners in the past I know have. If I was to sit up here and wear a short shirt that said, you know, monogram John Tobias County Commissioner, would, under your proposal policy, would I be allowed to, to do that?
If you're sitting already as Commissioner, I would believe so.
Thank you.
If it said for County Commissioner.
So you'd be, you'd be allowed to, you'd be allowed to-
I would think so.
Thank you. So if we had a speaker up here who was running in direct opposition to you, Sam Smith is running against you, by the way, would Sam Smith be able to wear a T-shirt that had his name on it?
I don't think it'd be appropriate, other than even my husband coming up, we're going to Rita Pritchett, one's coming to the dais either, so.
So, so isn't this kind of self-serving now, that we're allowing our names to be out there, but we're not allowing the names of people that are stepping up to run against them? My, my argument is-
Do you want to make it so that we don't wear it up here, too? I'd be, I'd be fine with that.
I'm, I'm with you, but, but the issue is, if you watch Space Coast Television, the first thing that's plastered up here, and by the way, you're welcome to take, that's a terrible picture of me, you're wel, or all pictures are, you're welcome to take that picture down. But the point is, our name is up here every time we speak. I'm sure somewhere it says John Tobias there, it says John Tobias right there. This seems-
But you're not campaigning at that time.
Yeah, but my name is up there, and anytime my name is in the, you know, the paper, that's bringing name recognition that we're not providing to the people that are running against us. So I think we're abridging people's speech, and, and this is scary. The fact that courts have said that we're allowed to do this doesn't necessarily make it right. And I respect, and goodness gracious, if you pay attention, and I know you have, to the audience out here, you will find by a factor of nine to one, it's people that are in opposition to the policies and, and procedures and ordinances I bring forward. But I greatly respect 200 people to come in here wearing green T-shirts that say, save our Indian River Lagoon.
That wouldn't be in this at all.
Unfortunately, the, the issue then would, 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 would be that if we're going to limit speech on individual candidates, then a slippery slope argument would be, what's the difference, difference from a candidate to an issue that may or may not be on the ballot? I'm, I'm, I'm disappointed with, with infringing upon anyone's opportunity of speech, whether it's with me, or as it is nine out of 10 times, against me. And I'm afraid that someone would, you know, who came in here, for example, with a Donald Trump T-shirt, you know, would someone who came in here with a Donald Trump T-shirt be allowed to wear that? Now, you know, President Trump is currently our president, but he's opened exploratory or political action committees, he's holding rallies, so he is a candidate for the Republican nomination in three years. Would we ask that person to step aside, or would we only ask people that have decided to run against us to step aside?
Well, you know, if, if you don't mind everybody coming in and doing that, I, I'm fine with it. But I, I think when we get to where we're getting distracted with, with campaigns at the time, and, and it could be personal campaigns, I, I think sometimes it might wear on what we're trying to do up here. If, if, if you're just dead set against it, it's fine with me. But I just, I just saw at another board I sat on that it was beneficial to be able to get the, the business done at hand without having distractions come in that were, were motivated and other than the benefit for the county. I'm not looking at this as a free speech issue. If you've really got it there and it's in your head, I, I respect John it and I hear it, but that wasn't the flavor of this. And, and I think it does have a benefit to it. But, you know, whatever y'all would like to do.
And I did not mean to insinuate that you were trying to curb-
No, sir, I just was-
Free speech, or tried to hold anyone, Sam Smith, who is running against you, but, and I'm making that name up to be very clear, you're a very capable one. I don't know why anyone would run against you. But I, I think we, we, we need to encourage political participation, and, and if people want to show up, you know, either supporting us, and that would be, by the way, my parents would be the only ones probably wearing, you know, John Tobias T-shirts, or, or be opposed to us. I think that they should have access to those seats to, and that microphone, to discuss their beliefs as to why we're doing a, a good or a bad job. So while I appreciate the intent of this, and while I love the thought behind it, I just think the, the potential outcomes of, of infringing upon people's free speech is somewhere that I, I couldn't be, be with right now.
Mr. Barfield, you have the floor.
Yeah, just like to ask Mr. Knox about this. I mean, what are the rules? I know there are rules as far as campaigning in government facilities, especially in near the elections office, since it's right across the hall. What, does that come into play here?
Now, this, the board chambers is what is called a limited public forum for the purposes of free speech, which means you pretty well control what goes in and comes out, in terms of who can say what, what's your end is going to be and all that stuff. The cases in, in our circuit, the 11th Circuit Court of Appeals, have made it pretty clear that you have that control, and you can do, you can pretty well exclude any kind of speech that you prefer to do. And unless it's something you're, you're actually working on, I mean, if you have something agenda item, they want to come in and speak, and you've got a procedure set up to allow people to speak, you can do that. If you have, for example, somebody who wants to come in and wear a T-shirt that supported the, the Indian River Lagoon referendum, and that was something that you were considering, which you were, that would be something that would be appropriate to be in here. And, and you would have people that would actually sign up for that, you have a procedure for that. If you have someone coming in saying, vote for Donald Trump, and he's standing at the microphone and, you know, burying his chest with Donald Trump sign on, that's something that you don't have to allow if you don't want to.
Any other thoughts? Commissioner Snarty?
I mean, this is clearly, and, and I'm, I am 100% sure that it wasn't Commissioner Pritchett's intention, but this is a clear, this would be a clear infringement on First Amendment rights. So, I mean, I, I don't want to discourage anybody, and I've been on the other side of it, where I've had my opponent at the podium and telling me what a horrible person I was and stuff. So it happens, and that's part of what we sign up for. And sometimes we see some things and we hear things we don't like. Sometimes there's a room full of angry people, and that's okay. That's, I mean, that's what we were elected to do, is to take that on. So I, I would not be in support of any kind of policy changes that would restrict, restrict anybody's First Amendment rights.
Just on that note, I, I don't really believe that this does that. And, you know, that's your opinion. I, I don't think it would ever take away someone's First Amendment rights to stand for the candidate they had. It would just be in a board meeting setting when we're doing other business that has no, no directive correlation to what's happening at the time. But I respect that, and, and we'll let this go. But I, I really don't think any of this had to do with taking away First Amendment rights, and that is my opinion.
All right, moving right along.
Mr. Ford.
Oh, okay. Letter of support. That's me. Yeah, okay. I support it. Next, what's next? Next, what's next?
I need to approve it.
Okay. I need somebody to make a motion to approve.
I just did.
Oh, okay. You guys are quick.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Isnardi. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, passes 5-0. That's the easiest thing I've ever done. Okay, public comments, Mr. Toby.
Charles Toby, 2555 Roberts Road, Melbourne, 32940. I wrote on my card about payola and conflict of interest. I want to briefly touch on my high school. After I got home from Georgia, went to, tried to go to Satellite High School, couldn't go there. I was seeing the head coach's, football coach's daughter, and I had conflict from all the athletic supporters and the police and everything. My mom drove my car, so I could drive her car to go to school, and they pulled her over. Anyway, so I went to Winter Park. A couple of families adopted me for a while over there so I could finish high school. And while I was going to high school, I took a job training course, and it was on, and I chose radio, whatever they call it. Anyways, they discussed about payola, about it being a conflict of interest, and although you're not directly given money or obvious things like trips to, not Vegas, that's where I go, to Colorado, to space conventions from public-private, which is another conflict of interest, public and private, that doesn't mix. But yet, that's why I have a couple of businesses. I can fund money through one, and, oh, if I'm dishonest, I could say, "Well, it's this business doing it." And that's another practice that they could utilize. And wouldn't you think that anybody taking benefits, personal benefits, to, from a conflicting interest, wouldn't that be a conflict of our interest? They're not going there in the best interest of our, and it's being funded. Where are those dollars coming from? Well, Commissioner Anderson and Commissioner Fisher, they indulged in those kind of trips, and good for them. If I had the opportunity, I would go, so I might pay my way and all my... Well, now he's head chair or head of Economic Development Commission of Palm Bay, and all the while he was making decisions with our tax dollars or theirs. Doesn't fit. I know, I have 30 seconds left, and I want to thank everybody, and I live like Hurricane Irma, Fred, Wilma. That's how I've lived since Palm Shores invaded my right to live. I can't speak, I can't have religion, I can't have property. You've heard the story of wasting my time, except for the, I thought the payola was very interesting, and I think it's a conflict of interest when we pass these things, and yet we're collecting personal benefits.
Board reports. Frank Abate?
Just one item, going back to Hurricane Irma. We have had two emergency declarations that were executed before the hurricane and shortly after by the policy group. We may need to extend that because they expire in seven-day increments, so I'm requesting the board's permission or authority to execute it as necessary, any extension. When we did Hurricane Matthew last year, I believe we had six extensions just to cover us over the time when we were doing things like debris removal, et cetera. So if the board would authorize the chairman or the county manager to sign those continued proclamations, extensions as necessary.
I entertain a motion for the county manager to sign the extensions.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Barfield, second by Commissioner Pritchett. Anyone wish to vote no? Scott Knox?
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Jim Barfield?
Yes, with the impact of Hurricane Irma, a lot of people were out of work for a good amount of time. I think that, and I believe what we need to do is we need to revisit the emergency services fund that we cut, what was it, $180,000 out of? That's for that one-time help if someone needs to pay rent or something like that at one time. I think we need to revisit that, and I'll probably bring that up tonight to discuss more about it. I don't want to throw anything out now to vote on, so just bringing that up. And that's all I have.
John Tobias?
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Christine Isnardi?
I'll just say quickly and sort of reiterate what County Manager Abate said. I just wanted to thank all the county employees and first responders and everyday neighbors that helped each other before, during, and after the hurricane. It was great, and I don't want to embarrass Commissioner Tobias, but someone shared a story with me before they even knew who I was about Commissioner Tobias pushing somebody through the rain onto a scat bus on a wheelchair. And that was really inspiring to hear because it's what you do when no one's watching, and I think it's important that we... It's hard to see what we do outside of these meetings, and I just want to thank everybody on this commission because I think we all have a great staff, and everybody pitched in, and I think it often doesn't get recognized, so thank you, guys.
Rita Pritchett?
I just want to throw in my two cents with Commissioner Isnardi on that. And I'm always overwhelmed that how the worst circumstances can bring out the best in the community, and I'm just really proud of our community, the way that it came together and did what it did. I'm fascinated. Florida Power and Light only had like six trucks left in the area. They had gone up to Texas to help. So those first few days, they were just working 24/7 trying to get power back up, and the county employees, I just, I think you guys are all amazing, and just thank you for everything.
Last but not least is me. I have a personal family issue that has arisen, and there may be a few meetings, one to three, maybe a lot, maybe none, I don't know. But going forward, there may be some meetings that I will be forced to miss, so I should be able to call into those meetings, but I need to entertain a motion that would allow me to call in with a second. And then, obviously, I won't be here to run the meeting, but I will be here, my presence will be here, even if it won't be physically. So do we have a motion?
I'd like to, I'd miss you if you weren't here. So I'd like to entertain a motion
I'm going to miss you, too, pal.
To allow Chairman Smith to be part of the meeting by any means of technology that Skype, telephone, you know? Anyway, I'd like to see him as well, any way possible.
Skype. I can't even spell that word, much less make it work. No texting.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion by Commissioner Tobias and a second by Commissioner Isnardi to allow me to call in and vote via conference call. Anyone wish to vote no? Passes 5-0. And that adjourns the meeting.
Mr. Chairman, go read your script.
Oh, jeez. See, I tried not to do that. As authorized by Section 286.011, parentheses eight, Florida statutes, the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners will now commence private attorney-client meetings for the purpose of discussing settlement negotiations and/or strategy related to litigation and expenditures in Brevard County versus B. West Townhouses Meadow Brook LLC, Trade Winds Plaza LLC at Al. The names of the persons attending the attorney-client private meeting will be Rita Pritchett, Jim Barfield, John Tobias, Kurt Smith, Christine Isnardi, Frank Abate, Scott L. Knox, Eden Bentley, Margaret, Eddie Sheffield, King, representing King Reporting Services. The attorney-client private meeting will be held in the county manager's room, third floor of Building C, at the Brevard County Government Operations Center, 2725, Judge Fran Jamison Way, Viera, Florida. The estimated length of the attorney-client session is one hour or less. I will now entertain a motion to temporarily adjourn and reconvene in the county manager's conference room.
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Barfield. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. Anyone wish to vote no?
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program sponsor, and are solely those at the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability or any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.